Pencil.
Yeah.
Don't start me yet.
I like this pen better than yours.
I was using some of it.
Wake up when I'm doing this. I think 7.5, there's a new one.
The reservation number, Shane, you said? That's it, just the reservation number.
Uh... Now, there was... My God, how many of these do we have? He's not looking at me yet, is he?
You're not looking at him.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to the October 7th Salina City Commission Meeting. We'd like to ask the clerk if notice was sent out to all interested parties at notifying them of this meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay. Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under color high, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have several awards and proclamations, and ask the clerk to read the first one.
Item 3.1, the month of October 2019 is National Arts and Humanities Month, and the city of Salina, Brittany Riffle, Arts and Humanities Commission Chair, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of cultural organizations, communities, and states across the U.S., as well as by the White House and Congress for more than 30 years. Whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the daily lives of every American, whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, community, and country by helping unify communities regardless of age, race, ethnicity, and participants gain a better understanding of other cultures. Whereas the arts and humanities drive tourism and revenue to local businesses, with participants stay longer and spend more as they seek authentic cultural experiences. Whereas arts integration and education improves academic performance and student retention. Whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind through the ages. Whereas arts spark the creativity and innovation as highly sought skills by business leaders. Whereas the arts improve health care, resulting in shorter hospital stays, better pain management, and less medication when included in patient care plans. Whereas the nonprofit arts industry strengthens the economy as it generates $166 billion in total economic activity annually, $27.5 billion in government revenue, and supports the full-time equivalent of 4.6 million jobs. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Trent W. Davis, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Salina, Kansas. I call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in Salina and our nation, and to specifically encourage greater participation by our citizens to take action to support the arts and humanities in our community.
Thank you. That sounds like that could be a fun month of celebrations. Any highlights?
Hi, I'm happy to share some highlights with you.
Thank you.
So, we've been off to a really busy start in October, and actually, the very first of October, we had Deanna Peterson, who is a visiting artist with the Salina Arts Center, come through our Arts Infusion Program and visit with high school students about her work on the film Loving Vincent, and talk with them about his life and make some connections there for them. We also had Salina Symphony visiting artists, Lorraine Min and Terrence Tam, work with both high school and middle school orchestras. And then, October is when we do the 7th Grade Culture Crawl, where we bring all of the 7th graders to downtown Salina, and they rotate through different stops and get us to explore our different culturals, which include the Arts Center, the Zoo, Salina Media Connection, Salina Public Library, the Smoky Hill Museum, Friends of the River, Lakewood Discovery Center, Sculpture Tour Salina, and the Salina Community Theater. And it's just an incredible resource that we can offer to those 7th graders.
More broadly, by the numbers, because we know that commissioners like visual aids, during the month, we will be enjoying the opening of two Salina Community Theater shows, three Stiefel concerts, one Pumpkin Palooza, and plus the Rolling Hills 20th Anniversary celebrations, two guided tours about the history of Native Americans in the area, and in our sister city nearby, Lindesburg, their biennial three-day Svenskyling Fest, first held in 1941, will take place in mid-October, including the dedication of a special sesquicentennial yonkors or heritage tree forged by local blacksmith Brian Holdsworth to be later installed in their Swenson Park. So, just take time this month to remember all that Salina and Celine County offers culturally all year round. Go to salinaae.com or to the websites or Instagram or Facebook pages for area arts and humanities producers to help us raise the curtain on a culturally rich National Arts and Humanities Month. Thank you.
Thank... Could you give that internet address again?
Yes, salinaae.com is our community-wide cultural calendar, and of course, many of the cultural agencies have Facebook pages or websites as well.
Thank you. Maybe we can get that highlighted on our television version of this. Ms. Riffle, if you would come forward, I'll give you a signed proclamation. And, next one.
Item 3.2, the week of October 6th through the 12th, 2018, is Fire Prevention Week in the city of Salina. Fire Chief Kevin Royce will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. That's a tough act to follow, but I'll try. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Whereas the city of Salina, Kansas, is committed to enduring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Salina, and whereas fires are serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are greatest at risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires. And whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths occur in homes each year, and whereas when smoke alarms sound, Salina residents may have less than two minutes to escape safety. And whereas Salina residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and therefore are more likely to survive a fire, whereas Salina residents should practice home fire escape drills at least twice a year during the day and night, and whereas Salina residents should teach children to escape on their own in case adults can't help them. And whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape; Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase not only our safety, but the safety of our children. Therefore, I, Trent Davis, M.D., Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all people of Salina to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways to get out in the event of a fire or any other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the public safety activities and efforts of the city of Salina Fire and Emergency Service during Fire Prevention Week 2019.
Thank you. I'm afraid to ask... Well, it's Fire Prevention Week, not Fire Week. So, are there any demonstrations of home escape?
Right now, we have multiple students coming through the stations for tours, and you may notice that all the stations have a fire safety message in their front yard. So, that's what we're going to do this month. I'd like to personally take a minute personally to thank this body for its support for our fire department and our prevention division. It's kind of unique within our department. We have really two different divisions, one trying to prevent and one fighting the fires. It's kind of hard to keep them apart sometimes. But the Fire Marshal Troy Long and Inspectors Joe Kavasic, Jeff Daley, and Roger Newell have done an excellent job in protecting this city, especially at the commercial level. I will have to say, we have one of the most unique business plans, and that is, we're the only one that has a business plan to put ourselves out of business. And I kind of wonder sometimes that what's that going to do to me. But we will definitely continue and make Salina a safer city.
Thank you. Give you this so you can display this at the... And 3.3.
Item 3.3, the month of October 2019 is Community Planning Month in the city of Salina. Greg Linkowitz, Planning Commission Chair, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Thanks for allowing me the time to read this proclamation. Community Planning Month proclamation states, whereas change is a constant, it affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, townships, rural areas, and other places in the state of Kansas. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to meaningfully be involved in making decisions, choices, to determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, demand excellence in planning and planning implementation. Whereas the month of October is designated as the National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and all its territories. Whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse the National Planning, excuse me, National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment. And whereas a celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of members of the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Heritage Commission, and Downtown Design Review Board, and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Salina. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the city of Salina, Celine County, and the North Central Regional Planning Commission, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to the public service by these professionals. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the month of October 19th is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the city of Salina in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month adopted this 7th day of October 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Any activities to get more citizens involved in these committees?
Well, this one's a little far away, but this week, they have a quad-state planning conference in Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's a collaboration between Arkansas, Kansas, Missouri, and Oklahoma. Next week, we do have our... Our Planning Commission actually has the awards for landscape, and the ceremony is next week, on Tuesday, the 15th.
And for local landscape here in...
Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry, I should have clarified that.
That sounds like that'd be very interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll give you a signed copy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I also add a big thank you to Senator Moran, Senator Roberts, and Representative Marshall's offices for having Kansas planners just a couple weeks ago to kick off Community Planning Month. We had planners down the hill, and they were wonderful in learning about community planning, so we really appreciate them.
Excellent. This is what it's about?
Thank you very much.
That's how our community gets its identity, so it's very, very important. 3.4, please.
Item 3.4, the day of October 12th, 2019, is serving our veterans with Aloha Day in the city of Salina. Kathy McCandless, Lieutenant Colonel John Riddle, post 1432, VFW Auxiliary, will read the proclamation.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good afternoon. Whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary is conducting its 106th year of volunteer service in America. Whereas, year after year, the organization continues to honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by maintaining memorials to their service and sharing their history with our nation's youth, so that our nation's veterans have done... So that what our nation's veterans have done for America will not be forgotten. Whereas Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary supports the troops currently deployed overseas. Whereas the 470,000 members represent the families who have served or are currently on foreign soil protecting our freedom. Whereas members volunteer nearly 1 million hours in Veterans Affairs, medical centers, and other hospitals throughout this country. Whereas the organization provides awards, scholarships, and scholarships to students based on their expression of patriotism through art, speech, and volunteerism. Whereas the 2019-2020 national president Peggy Haakey is rallying VFW auxiliary members behind her theme, "Serving Our Veterans With Aloha." And whereas October 12th, 2019, will be a time to celebrate her visit to Salina, Kansas. I do hereby declare October 12th, 2019, as serving our veterans with Aloha Day in honor of national president Peggy Haakey and all members of the VFW Auxiliary for their outstanding volunteer service to veterans and their families, the city of Salina, Kansas, and our great country. Trent Davis.
Thank you. I think a lot of folks wonder exactly what the VFW does in cities, and I think you shed some light, any...
Well, we are gathering their... We are gathering all of the VFW members and the auxiliary members to kind of come together, exchange ideas, see how we can improve what we do for our veterans here. She'll also look through donations. We donate to various causes here in Salina to help support those. She is also going to make a visit over to Abilene on Friday for the Eisenhower Vigil, which is something that she'll only be the second national president that has done that, so that's kind of an honor. And while she's here, we'll be traveling... She'll be traveling throughout the great state of Kansas. We'll take her on a quick tour kind of throughout western Kansas and down through Wichita, so she can kind of get an idea of what Kansas is all about, since she's from Hawaii.
Great. Is the event on the 12th open to the public or members?
It is. There will be a breakfast at the VFW at 8:00 in the morning, and it's by donation, so those who would like to come out and visit or meet her are more than welcome to come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have a signed proclamation for you. I noticed none of the adults have taken the offer up on the steps. I'm assuming there must be one more group who's going to use them. 3.5.
Item 3.5, the month of October 2019, is Bullying Prevention Month in the city of Salina. Libby Kirsch and Daniel Green will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon. Hi.
Whereas bullying is a physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm intentionally directed at a person or group of people, and...
Whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology, and...
Whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence, affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually, and...
Whereas thousands of Kansas children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually, and...
Whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems, and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as writing the best going to school and attending community activities, and...
Whereas children who bully are greater risk at engaging in more serious violent behaviors, and...
Whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that Salina City Commission proclaims October as Bullying Prevention Month, and...
Be it further resolved that Kansas schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations be encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and adolescents.
Thank you. Libby and Daniel, are there any citywide, big events that you're... Helping put it, I have one. Any way that adults can get those nice T-shirts?
Well, we did do a movie for, I think it was 3rd through 6th graders, about ways to prevent bullings and bullying, different like subjects of it, and it just was like explaining how you can stop it and do different ways to keep it from happening.
Well, I think most of us in this room are hoping that your success will be, because adults can bully as well. So, it's not just at your age group. So, keep the work up, and thank you for coming. If you two will come up front, I'll give you the signed proclamation.
And if you do want the shirts, you can go to our CAPS... Sorry, I'm just answering the question. Our CAPS website, it's www.capsofsalina.org. There's lots of different styles, so we'd love to have the whole town looking like this.
There are no shameless plugs here. Thank you.
That's right.
Thank you very much. We are now at the point of the Citizens Forum. It's an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium to address the commission on any topic that's not on the agenda, and as always, comments limited to five minutes.
Timer's on. Phil Black, newly appointed member to the Solid Waste Committee. I don't know, I guess at my age, that becomes an exciting thing. But we were in a meeting here, the study session earlier, and Commissioner Hodges made a point of talking about some of the studies you've been reading, and I just read one that had a few points I just really would like to bring out. It's called "Taking the Heat: Making Cities Resilient to Climate Change." First point, although the timing, scope, and magnitude of the consequences of global warming remain uncertain, the potential risks are significant. Second point, climate change could reshape the earth. Third point, cities will be on the front lines of climate adaptation. Fourth point, urban adaptation could drive one of the largest infrastructure build-outs in history. So, all this development we've done down here, one of the very best things we did is put in new water and sewer lines, right? Given the scale of tasks, the urban adaptation will likely draw on innovative sources of financing, and the things that they list in this report to finance all this make our development downtown look simple, which it's not. And then finally, adaptation may raise questions of fairness when it gets into what areas of town are going to be affected. So, for example, finally getting the Save-A-Lot store in was kind of an example of how some areas have access to food and others don't. So, those are all part of that. What makes this whole report really interesting to me is it's not created by a bunch of snowflakes, of which I am a proud member, but it's created by... It's an investment report created by Goldman Sachs. So, if Goldman Sachs is talking about this stuff, it's kind of normalized, which brings me to the second part of this, and that is regarding single-use plastic bags. I know that there are positives and negatives to it, but for me, what it does is it sends a message that if we ban it, that we are trying to do something, and begins to move us culturally in the direction we need to go. Unfortunately, first, thanks for putting me on the Solid Waste Committee. Unfortunately, they only deal with waste. So, in terms of stopping it from coming out to begin with, that isn't specifically within the scope of the committee, although if you were to bring on that suggested coordinator, that might be a person who would say, "Well, okay, we need to study, how can we stop the waste to get there from the start?" But it seems pretty clear to me from this report that the city is really where the action's at, and it's where we can get most done. So, again, I hope that you will take up the issue of banning single-use plastic bags. I know that Jim and I had talked twice about that versus biodegradable bags versus non, you know, reusable bags, in other words, like cloth. And I think there are issues there, but I think we can actually get something done at the city. So, thank you for your time, and thanks for the appointment.
You're welcome. Does... Come on up forward. Each or most of our citizens' boards have mission statements, or not? I know I don't know the answer to the question right now, but...
I don't know that I would call them mission statements, but quite a few of them have a stated purpose or set of responsibilities by way of the... Is this on? By way of the enabling adoption that created them in the first place.
I was just wondering if waste prevention would come under the purview of that?
Yeah, the Solid Waste Committee comes out of kind of a state mandate as it relates to formation of that committee. In fact, it's a county-level committee in responsibility that the city's taken on. So, some of that guiding language and some of the required reporting that we have to submit annually is all driven by state statute and mandate.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. My name's Dave Klinsman. Just a real short stint history about me. I grew up in Concordia originally. I grew up there most of my life. I moved to Kansas City. I was there for 28 years for the Windataid County Sheriff's Department. I moved back here a little over a year ago. I got married, and my wife worked for the Journal. And so, that's been with me. What I'm here to do is I'd like to thank everybody for being here today, okay? Taking time out of your day, and I just want to thank... What I'm here to do is just hand out an invitation to a gathering that we're having tomorrow night, the Friends at the Centennial Park. I'd like to invite everybody. Everybody here is welcome. I got these flyers in my hand. If you allow me to approach, I'd like to give you...
Please.
I'd like to hand these out to you. You're all more than welcome to come here. We've got kind of a committee together.
Thank you.
I'll be back in the room, so when you're all exit, I'll just hand you one still. But that's why I'm here, is to hand these out. You're all more than welcome and invited. It's... The information is on there at 6:30 tomorrow night. It's the Calvary Apostolic... I never can get that word right. How do you pronounce that? Apostolic?
Apostolic.
Okay. That's where we're going to have the meeting at. So, I would love to see you all there. Like I said, we have a committee that we'd all like to show you some things, present some things to you. Don't feel like, "Well, I don't live in that area, I don't want to go." Come on by. We just have some interesting points we'd like to share with you. We'd like to have you there, have your presence there, so please, just show up, you know? It's kind of a discussion session, that sort of thing, so please, come on by. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
James Bowden, 1111 East Iron. I have two topics I'd like to talk about. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Hodges for communicating the agenda via social media. I think that aided in getting a lot of people here. It also aids in informing people what's going on in the commission. I'd like to encourage the city to send that out as one body instead of from one body. And so, if we could get the agenda, the minutes, and maybe a brief summary of commission meeting, I think that'd be great. Secondly, I think it's fairly serendipitous that it's Community Planning Month. Whether it's recycling, or single-use plastic bags, energy independence, pollution, all of these things are affecting our community, and I feel like we should be considering these on more of a frequent basis than we are. So, I would like to propose a Sustainability and Community Resilience Advisory Board. I'm not sure how to bring this into fruition, but as you said, Mayor Davis, our community gets its identity from community planning. And so, I'd like to be a community that's known for taking a step in the right direction to combat and reduce the impact we as humans are having on this environment. Thank you.
Before you leave, what proposed name of that? I wasn't writing fast enough.
Sustainability and Community Resilience Advisory Board.
Okay. I've not been part of setting up a board. I'll find out how that's done, and if it came to pass. No, right now, I don't know what the procedure is. I've been just proposing one and voting on it, but we'll find out. Okay, thank you.
Norman, Manal Salina. Been a nice thing said here about recycling.
Norman, Manal Salina. Been a nice thing said here about recycling, reusing, and show you what we can use. Do you know what this is?
Oh, okay, now...
You do? You know what it is?
I know what I would use. Unless there's some more surprises as you keep unfolding. Looks like a grocery bag.
It's a diaper bag. It'll be recyclable. And I've been using it. And it's pink.
You're a real man. And I say that as a friend.
That's what she told me. It takes a man to work in...
That's right.
Deborah Corrales.
Ms. Corrales, bring that. Thank you. Okay.
I'm here to speak on the pit bull ban. Contrary to popular belief, pit bulls aren't any more or less dangerous than any other breed of dog. Fifty-one dogs were received, were rescued from Bad News Kennels. And almost all of them immediately went into foster homes because they weren't aggressive. A fighting dog is now a therapy dog. And there's a toy made after him. And Mel received an edible bone from the city of Dallas, Texas, a few weeks after another city council person awarded his abuser the same key. Johnny Justice, a former fighting dog, now helps six children. He is a therapy dog. I just don't know how you guys or anybody can think that pit bulls are inherently dangerous when they're not. And when the city presents their program or whatever it is they're gonna, I hope you guys do your own research. The American Bar Association doesn't agree with pit bull bans. The American Kennel Club, the American Veterinary Medical Association, American Veterinary Society of Animal Behavior, the CDC, the National Animal Control Association, the National Canine Research Council. The Obama administration says that BSL doesn't work and drains our city of funds that could be used elsewhere. And State Farm Insurance doesn't have any breed specifications. You can own any dog. And I hope you guys do research. I believe I sent Carl Ryan and Trent Davis the video of Vanessa on Facebook message. That would be another good one to watch. The champions, beyond the myth. Educate yourself. Don't just rely on what the city hands you. Thank you.
Could I ask a real quick question? Aren't we going to be considering the breed-specific legislation? Some alterations to that, some reconsideration of that in the next three weeks?
Yes, staff's working on an objective assessment of that. So we plan to cover both issues. And as we put, as soon as we pull it together, we'll have it before you. But we're still working on trying to look at the resources she mentioned, as well as the rationale behind the ban in the first place. And then additionally, there's issues as it relates to service animals and emotional support animals that we're also looking at the legal issues related to that.
I just wanted to let you know, it has been a topic recently.
No, I know. I was at the advisory board the last couple of times that the, I mean, it's been over a year when this was recommended that you guys deal with this. And we were told at the last meeting, it would be a maximum of 45 days before you guys were presented with this. And it's been actually way over 45 days because the meeting was August 13th, I believe. So I think honestly that if we're going to see this, we should see it after your election. I think honestly that your election, this is way too close to the election. I think getting, sorry, new or different or the same needs to happen before this is really addressed. I really think it should wait till after the elections.
Thank you.
My name is Tonya Queer. I'm back. First of all, I want to comment on the recycling issue. I think it would be a great idea, you know, we have those big trash bins to collect all our trash. I would, I would highly suggest making it to where we have the little blue bins for every person that lives in our community to recycle. Because I'm number one with recycling, and it just cringes me to throw away plastic products or glass products and so forth. So where I come from, from Colorado, it's mandatory. So it might be something in the future that people might want to be interested in, in starting. Back to the, the pit bull ban. I just want the city to know what happened to me and my dog and probably families prior to me was unethical and humane and vindictive. And I just, you know, I hope that y'all have received, or the mayor has received the, the letter from the FHGO, which is the Federal Housing Equal Opportunity Act. You know, we talk about bullying. Well, I don't think our pit bullies should be bullied as well. So, you know, that's really all I have to say. And I, you know, I'm dead set on not letting or allowing other people to, to go through what I went through and what I'm still going through. So that's really all I have to say on that. And I hope you guys make the right decision when it comes to that point. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sorry.
I was up in one of the other meetings and spoke to you afterwards, and you wanted us, oh, Rita Lachelle, I'm sorry. Wanting numbers. Have you guys done your own research, you know, outside of what you guys were wanting us to bring? Pit bulls are not vicious by nature. If you've been around them, you would know it. Yeah, you may have a few, but a lot of it is because of the owners. Owners need to be trained on how to train their dogs. I have four dogs. None of them, I have socialized them, and that is the biggest thing with the pit bulls. Socialize them. Get them around people. Start when they're puppies. You can't look at it and say, you're mean because you look like this. Otherwise, there are all kinds of dogs that we would have the stance with. You would have pit bull, or German Shepherds, Rottweilers, Dominan Pinchers. None of them dogs have ever been banned by a city because of them being a vicious dog. You guys looked at this one dog and decided it was vicious. And you guys have stood behind that for, let's see, at least 18 years. And it needs to be readdressed, and research needs to be done by you guys to see that it is not fair to these dogs.
Thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the regular meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2019. Item 6.2, approve the special meeting minutes of September 30th, 2019. And item 6.3, approve resolution number 19-7729, authorizing the city manager to permit the muscular dystrophy association to solicit within the city's rights-of-way utilizing off-duty firefighters on October 11th through 13th, 2019.
Is there any item that the commissioner would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Now move to 7.1.
Item 7.1, amending the future land use map in the Salina Comprehensive Plan to show the future land use designation of six lots on the north side of Claflin Avenue and four lots on the south side of Kerwin Avenue west of South Fourth Street as public, semi-public, instead of urban residential in order to be consistent with the U University District zoning designation 7.1A, second reading ordinance number 19-11014.
This, I'm sorry, this was second reading. I was gonna, I think we had discussion at some point. We've had no comments received on this item since we discussed it two weeks ago, actually. Is there any comment or questions from any of the commissioners? All right. Any comments from the public? Any action to be taken by the commission? Mayor Davis, I move we approve on second reading ordinance number 19-11014, amending the future land use designation of the 1.42 acre tract of land on the west side of South Fourth Street from urban residential to a public, semi-public.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 19-11014. Vote by roll call.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. That motion carries four to nothing. We now can move to 7.2.
Item 7.2, changing the zoning district classification on six lots on the north side of Claflin Avenue and four lots on the south side of Kerwin Avenue west of South Fourth Street, owned by Kansas Wesleyan University from R1, single-family residential, R2, multi-family residential, and R3, multi-family residential to U University District. 7.2A, second reading ordinance number 19-11015.
And this item, like the one before, it was passed on first reading two weeks ago. And we've received no comments, any comments or questions from the commissioners? Any questions or comments from the public? Any action to be taken by the commission?
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 19-11015.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 19-11015, and we'll have vote by roll call.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. That motion carries four to nothing. Item 7.3.
Item 7.3, resolution number 19-7747, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with Clark Meis and Linville Chartered for the cooperative placement and maintenance of landscape planners in the Eighth Street right-of-way.
Mr. Andrew, thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
I'm sorry.
Just to be abundantly clear, we've had no involvement with the work on the document other than to receive a copy of it as proposed. But I think I will step out during the consideration of this matter.
I guess just for someone watching who might not know the reason.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. That's for me to give you advice.
No, that's, that's a good point. I am a member, shareholder in the law firm of Clark Meis and Linville. And frankly, you'll, frankly, you'll see that it calls for signature by Pete Peterson, our treasurer. I serve in the role as president, is why we don't have the president signing the document as well, so.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a consideration of a proposed license agreement with Clark Meis and Linville Chartered. And the purpose of the agreement would be to allow for the placement and maintenance of landscape planners that would be located in the Eighth Street right-of-way in front of their property. And license agreements, we probably bring about five to 10 of these for the commission's consideration each year. They have a variety. Some involve underground installations, some above-ground installations, and some have historically involved cooperative landscaping in the right-of-way. But a license agreement is a mechanism by which you can authorize private use of the right-of-way subject to certain specified terms and conditions which are contained in the agreement. And over the past few years, we have had agreements. If you're familiar with the Quick Shop property at Centennial and Crawford, there's a cooperative landscaping placed in the Centennial Road right-of-way. There at Ohio and Crawford, the CVS Pharmacy, there was cooperative landscaping placed in the Crawford Street right-of-way there. And on South Santa Fe, south of the Salina Regional Health Center, there was a project between the city and Salina Regional Health Center to enhance the Santa Fe right-of-way. In this case, the right-of-way in question is South Eighth Street, which is a platted street that has 80 feet of right-of-way and is dedicated on the original plat for the town of Salina. Clark Meis and Linville Charter owned property that's described as Lot 123 in the south half of Lot 21 on Eighth Street, which is this property right here. They moved into that building in 1970. In 1984, there was an addition put on the back. Their front entrance is centered on the west facade of the building facing Eighth Street. They are bordered on the south by a city parking lot and by an alley and parking lot on the west. Clark Meis and Linville is working with their architect, Mr. Mark Regir, who is here present if you have any specific questions about their improvements. But their Phase 1 improvements involve changes to the front facade of their law office building. And specifically, they'd be adding some windows to increase natural light and changing the recessed entrance off of Eighth Street. That's Phase 1 of the project. As Phase 2, they're proposing to remove the existing front west sidewalk and the Angledon Street parking spaces that are currently in front of the building, and to install new sidewalks with brick-paver accents and low-concrete planter areas, and to convert the parking along Eighth Street to parallel parking. Currently, the only location between Mulberry and Ash on Eighth Street that has the recessed head-in parking is this property. And so they would be proposing to eliminate that and put in planters that would have low-growing shrubs, decorative plantings, and ground cover. And these planters, as proposed, would be maintained by Clark Meis and Linville as part of this agreement. Salina Downtown Design Review Board had reviewed these facade and streetscape improvements at their June 13th, 2019 meeting. So Mr. Regir had filed this application for a license agreement for the placement of private aesthetic improvements in September. And so in addition to filling in those head-in parking stalls and reconstructing the sidewalk, their proposal is to construct four concrete planters within the sidewalk area. And those are depicted by the shading here. So this, 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 and this would be a planter. They would be in various dimensions, but they would have four-inch raised concrete curb around the edges. And then, as you can see right here, this northernmost area extends in front of property owned by Downtown Auto Service, Mr. Francis Buckley. And he has consented to the placement of a planter in front of his property. So the, the total area in front of the building is 16 feet wide. And with the construction of those planters, there would still be a ability to have a six-foot-wide sidewalk for path of travel in front of the building, and obviously the conversion of the head-in stalls to parallel parking. So as part of this agreement, Clark Meis and Linville would be responsible for initial planting for all ongoing maintenance and the replacement costs associated with the landscaping in the Eighth Street right-of-way. As far as your options, one option would be to approve the attached resolution authorizing the mayor to execute this license agreement with Clark Meis and Linville. Because Clark Meis is a party to the agreement, it was prepared by staff without the assistance of our legal counsel, Clark Meis and Linville. It was modeled on previous approved and executed license agreements for cooperative landscaping. And staff is comfortable that we've addressed the city's interests. The agreement contains all the elements that are traditionally found in these types of agreements that have previously been entered into. You could postpone consideration this afternoon if you feel additional information is needed to help you reach a decision. You could postpone consideration of this request and request that the city contract with outside counsel to independently review the license agreement prior to taking any action. Or you could decline to approve the license agreement and provide further direction to Clark Meis Linville and to staff. But this plan is consistent with the other streetscape activities that are going on within the Santa Fe corridor, but it's being done on private initiative. And it does involve the placement of private maintained improvements within the public right-of-way. So with that, I'd be open to any questions. And we do have Mr. Regir here, who is the designer.
I think the, I just wanted to confirm that the license runs with the property parcel itself. So in the event that there are subsequent owners... itself, so in the event that there are subsequent owners, they would then have that same responsibility for maintaining the planter area?
Yes. The, this, if it is approved, the license agreement would be signed and executed, then it would be recorded in the Registered Deeds Office, and it's designed to run with the land, and if there was a change in ownership or form of ownership, the new owner would be responsible. And there are terms in there essentially that if, for some reason in the future, it's not maintained to your satisfaction, it could be terminated by either party, and the improvements are there essentially at the pleasure of the city commission, so if 15 years from now it's not maintained, or you believe it's not what you want that right-of-way to be used for, the city commission can initiate a termination of the agreement. But absent that, it's going to run with the land regardless of who owns it.
Gotcha. So then we would be then assuming responsibility for any improvements or planters should either party decide to terminate the agreement, or if we terminated it because it wasn't being properly maintained?
If the agreement is terminated, the current owner of the property, if we so directed, would have to remove the planters from the sidewalk and restore it back at their expense.
Okay.
And Dean touched on it, but there's two scenarios. One is, you know, failure to maintain, and there's a cure period and failure to cure. The other is just that you, we conclude that there's other or better public interest served, and it needs to be removed, even if it were being well-maintained, you'd still have the ability to require that removal.
Okay, thank you.
You are the custodians of this right-of-way, so if you were to find that there was some public purpose that was higher than having these planters there, you could direct that they be removed.
At their expense.
At their expense, yes, not at the city's expense.
Commissioner Hoppick? Commissioner Ryan?
Nothing.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the public? I have one coming up.
I'm fine with it, but I kind of got a comment. I'm kind of piggybacking. I just returned from New Alfina, Illinois, and I've been watching your street expansion. You've narrowed the streets down. You got enough room for these SUVs to turn around? Because they're using ATVs for police department vehicles down there now.
Yeah, we don't expect them to turn around in the street.
In an emergency?
And that's not, that was never the plan.
Well, maybe the engineer, whoever.
No, that wasn't the plan when the street was wider, let alone now that it's narrower.
I just seen the outside. Huh. So if they had to respond to emergency, they can't make you, you're going to have to buy new vehicles.
I guess if you see a big black vehicle with red and blue lights flashing, get out the way. All righty, bring this back to the commission for action if any.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve resolution number 19-7747, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with Clark Meis and Linville Chartered for the cooperative placement and maintenance of landscape planners in the Eighth Street right-of-way.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve resolution 19-7747. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Thank you. Could you let?
We have.
All right, thank you. And we can slowly read 7.4.
Item 7.4, consider request of the Salina Innovation Foundation for the use of $75,000 for the first phase of the roof repairs.
Mayor Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. Last year, as part of the 2019 budget process, the Salina Innovation Foundation requested that the city provide some funds that would be used as matching funds for a grant that they were anticipating applying for from the Heritage Foundation. The dollar amount that they requested was $75,000, and the actual project that they're planning to do is to fix the roof of the Masonic Temple. They applied for that grant, but were not awarded that grant at the time. They anticipate that they'll apply for that grant again in the future, but in the meantime, they would like the city to release the $75,000 that we set aside to start the project at the Masonic Temple roof. They've determined that they could do this project in phases, so they could fix the worst part of the roof right now, and then in the future, apply for more grants and get some additional funding, and then try and get the rest of the roof fixed in that manner. The total cost of the project is $225,000. The first phase of the project would be the $75,000 that the city has set aside. They do have some funds set aside from an insurance claim, but they can't receive those funds until the full project is fixed, so that's why they can't use those projects or that funding on the front end. And then the area of the building that they plan to fix is the area of the building where they have some historic painted backdrops that are stored, and I'll let, I'll let them talk about it a little bit if you want some more details about the historic painted backdrops. Mary Landis, the executive director of Salina Innovation Foundation, is here tonight. It looks like she came in full force with some board members as well. The 2019 budget, as I said, does include $75,000. It was intended to be used as matching funds, but those funds are available. They are in the Sales Tax Economic Development Fund. So your options tonight would be to approve the request from the Salina Innovation Foundation to use that $75,000 for the first phase of the roof project. You could postpone the consideration or deny the request altogether, and Mary Landis is here if you want to ask any questions, or I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Well, come on up. You can educate us a little more about the history or what the nature of the problem is.
Thank you for hearing our request. We are racing against time to save the Masonic Temple building. The area that's directly to the west and under the roof, that's the portion that's leaking the worst at this point, and there are 104 historic hand-painted backdrops in that area. The theater is in that area. It spans three floors. It's the size of the stiefel. These backdrops were pre, were painted in Chicago in 1905, so they predate the building, and each of them are a work of art. They're a really incredible resource for Salina. Some of them have sustained some water damage. The water, every time it rains, it's coming in on either side of the backdrops. We have, literally have trash buckets that are there catching the water, and so it's coming dangerously close. Once the backdrops become wet or have water touch them, then the paint is reactivated, and they're damaged for good, so. So that's what we're really racing against time for. We feel like if we can just get started this year and get that portion of the roof protected, that will protect those historic backdrops as we work to raise the additional funding to protect the rest of it. We're also seeing water damage seeping in further, and in the two years that I've been there, it's starting to reach down as far as the first floor in the historic areas and the plaster, so. So we are, our first objective is to get the building sealed up, and the roof starts with the top. We have a fundraiser that's planned in February by a group of supporters, it's a Raise the Roof fundraiser, to raise some additional money, and these women are willing to sit down one-on-one with donors in Salina and work to get significant checks written to help us with this. We have tremendous support. So we are asking for consideration to use these funds now before winter sets in to help us with this.
Thank you. Just one question. Are there any special guidelines or rules that govern reallocation of money in this type of a scenario?
This was kind of a discretionary allocation in the first place. That's why we felt it appropriate to bring back to you as the nature of the, you know, leveraging of the grant aspect changed. So I think we have a little bit of history that predates me of investing in roof repairs in particular to try to seal up, keep the weather and elements out of buildings while owners and volunteers try to find a way to save them. The stiefel, I think we took a similar approach, so you certainly have a precedent, and I think you have the discretion to do that if you so choose.
Thank you. Before I had dismissed them from the podium, I realized I didn't ask you if there are any questions from here.
I've got a couple of questions from Mary, if you don't mind. I just wanted to confirm, have you reapplied for the Heritage Trust Fund grant for this cycle?
Yes, in fact, I met with Doug McKinney today with the Northwest Regional Development, and so we are working on reapplying. The deadline is December 1st. The advanced application is for November 1st, so we're ready to go.
Oh, awesome. And when do they notify?
They notify in February.
Okay, okay. Now, if we go ahead and disperse the funds for, for the first phase of the roof, I understand that then that $75,000 contribution can't be considered as part of the matching funds required for that grant?
Right, that particular, yes, that particular grant is a reimbursement grant. So this fund, the, this portion of the roof would just be considered a project that was already in progress, but we're able to use the $65,000 from the insurance claim, and then any money that we raise in advance for this fundraiser could also go towards that.
Gotcha. That was my, that was my question about whether or not the insurance funds.
And it's a 20/80 match, so we would need at least 20%, and so that would, that would more than help us with that.
The $65,000 would more than, would more than cover that. That's awesome. And is that okay with the insurance company?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good, so.
Yeah, it's assurance partners, and they've, they've been very cooperative with us. What they're willing to do is, the contractor will simply submit their bill, and then they will reimburse the contractor directly.
Gotcha, gotcha. Awesome. Thank you. That's all I've got.
What kind of damage created the $65,000 claim on the roof?
Hail damage.
And they will not release those funds until the roof is completely?
Right, so it was, it was, they had released $120,000 originally, was the original check, and then the $65,000 was for when it was, that project was complete. The $120,000 had been misused by the masons originally, and so that's where.
So there's $120,000 that was paid out for a roof that was not used?
Correct, correct. It was embezzled. And so, but they, the insurance company is willing to, it's under new ownership with our foundation, and they're willing to still honor that agreement with the $65,000 if we can work on the roof and get that fixed.
You have some, because the claim was made for the masons and the prior ownership.
Yes, correct.
You have a letter from them guaranteeing that that 65 will be?
Yes.
Payable to the new entity?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And it says you have three roofing companies who are able to begin, have, are they going to just overlay? Are there, is that a rubber roof?
Yeah, it's a PVC roof, and so the plan is to remove that roofing material and to put down another PVC. And so they, and they are willing to peel back a portion of that and work on the portion that will be covered under the $75,000, seal that up, and then that portion would stay. It would have a 15-year warranty, and then we would continue to work on the rest of the roof as we get the funding.
I guess I just have one more question, something that I thought of. I know that in the past, you've had people go up to the roof, and it's, it's an awesome, awesome, awesome place. How does, how does that impact the life of the new membrane that's going to be going up? I mean, are there any precautions that should be taken in terms of limiting access, or where people can, can walk on that?
I, I think it's wise to not have large groups of people up there. What I've been told, this roof now is out of warranty, so every time we walk on it, it's potentially making pinholes or, but it's also increasing awareness of the building, and so I think it's been important to bring people up, to show them what we have up there. But I think going forward, what, what I would love to see is eventually a deck put up there, that that would be used for event space, much like Mary Mount has. But at this time, this would be a PVC that would be laid down, sealed, and, and with caution, we can walk up there, but it would not be appropriate to have large events up there, large groups of people.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Ryan?
No questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, comments from the public? Any action to be taken by the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the request of the Salina Innovation Foundation for the use of $75,000 for the first phase of the roof project.
You're second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Well, I think like the stiefel, I am concerned that, for this building, I mean, it is a historic building. I appreciate especially the letter from Ms. Vosset. I was involved in helping her catalog the, the existence of the drops that are in the building, and at one time, I recall that they were insured for $2 million. So my concern, if we don't participate, is that we go from having a historic building that anchors the south of our, of our Santa Fe area to having historic problems. So I think that it's well-advised to try to help them at this point.
Certainly agree with that opinion.
There's one clarification, it was pointed out to me that the city owned the stiefel when we did the repair work and then transferred ownership to the foundation, but nonetheless, we have previously identified historical buildings and tried to keep them weather-tight.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, and I think that, yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure how, you know, how I feel on this, but I think what Commissioner Ryan said, that's the way I've been approaching it, in that you've got a building that's the anchor for the south part of downtown, and we've made such a tremendous investment in downtown that I guess where I'm coming to it from is I don't, I want to do what we can to see that the building doesn't deteriorate any further and, you know, create an eyesore at the south end of, of the investment that we've made in the downtown corridor.
And the purpose of this building would actually tie into our economic development plan, and this is a little bit of, not our usual way of spurring development, but it does have value from that aspect as well.
Yeah, I know the group's working hard, and again, I struggle a little bit with weighing where our budget is and using these funds, but I guess I see how successful the stiefel's been. I see the renovations that are happening to the Lee Building, and I guess I hope that there's something becomes of this building that we'll someday look back and say it was $75,000 well-spent, because it is a tremendous building, but what I see is $75,000 is a start of, that's a multimillion-dollar project to renovate that building. I've been in it numerous times, so.
We will have the vote. All in favor of approving the request of the Salina Innovation Foundation for the use of $75,000 for the first phase of roof repairs? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Thank you. 7.5.
Item 7.5, resolution number 19-7748, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Community Access Television of Salina Incorporated, doing business as Salina Media Connection for public, educational, and governmental television programming services through a public access channel and a governmental educational access channel.
Mr. Wood.
Mayor Commissioners, Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood. I tried to write the longest blue sheet in the history of blue sheets. I don't know if I hit it. I know you guys have had some big.
No, 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 that's the, that's the master.
Okay, well, you know, deputy city manager at the time, so I think you're, the deputy city manager's supposed to write a long blue sheet, so that's, that's what I've learned so far. So I'll, I'll just take you through a little bit of the history of this agreement, and we'll just start from there. So back in 1992, the city commission approved an ordinance that established a cable franchise fee that charged the local cable franchise 5% for the local cable provider. It designated a community access television, which is now Salina Media Connection, I'll refer to them as SMC for the rest of the time here, to manage the use of the PEG channels, which those are the, the public, educational, and governmental TV channels that are on cable. It also required the cable provider to charge an additional fee that was then passed on to SMC as part of the, above and beyond the franchise fee, as far, as part of their operational costs. After that cable franchise fee was approved, the commission entered into an agreement with SMC that outlined the scope of services for financial support that the city would provide, and basically, the things that they said that they would do is operate the public access cable channels, operate the educational and government access channel, and then also operate the community access center, provide training, and then provide playback and cable casting of an average of 20 hours of programming in a week. This agreement also established that the city would provide funding level at 40% of the collected franchise fee. It dedicated space in the memorial hall for the use as a community access center. This agreement took place in 1992. It was renewed several times. It was renewed several times over the time period, and actually, the provisions stayed pretty much the same up until 2006. There were some significant changes in state law that required us to renegotiate that. The state law standardized all franchise agreements with cable companies. Effectively, it nullified our agreement with the cable company at the time, and so we had to renegotiate with SMC in 2007. The big thing that happened there is that the state no longer allowed cities to add an additional fee on that was passed through. So what we did is, because of the money that they lost at the time, we increased our allocation of the franchise fee from 40% up to 70%. So there was a pretty big boost in income for them there as far as the allocation of franchise fee. And then that decreased 5% a year until it was at the level it currently sets at today at 40%. 2015 was the last time that we renewed this agreement, and at that time, the agreement that was written had an automatic renewal, and it was renewed on an annual basis unless the city provided notice on July 1st of its intent to terminate. At the June 17th City Commission meeting, the City Commission directed staff to provide notice to SMC that we would begin, that we would terminate and begin negotiations of a new agreement. Discussion about the SMC agreement actually started on June 3rd at the study session. At that time, you were provided with historical overview, some of that stuff I just provided again, of our relationship with SMC. And then we also talked about some of the ongoing issues and concerns that we've had, and we listed some possible priorities and expectations that we could maybe look at moving forward. And just, I'm not going to go through every one of them, but we talked about higher-quality video, we talked about closed captioning, we talked about videos being translated into Spanish, we talked about coverage of City Commission study sessions, we talked about their organization of their library of their archived videos on YouTube and then on their website. And based on those priorities, we started our negotiation. Kind of basically, that was the set of list of things that we were looking at as we started talking with SMC. They did indicate at the time that they could meet many of those expectations, but it was going to take some new hardware, new cameras, new software in order to do that. And so they have kind of worked through some of that, tried to figure out how they could provide new hardware and software, and they do have a plan moving forward in order to make some of those things actually happen. So over the last couple of months, we have been working with SMC, met with them a lot to kind of come together on an agreement that we could have all these things put into paper. I'm just going to go over a couple of the things that are the big changes. First, cable casting of combined 20 hours per week of original replay programming has been part of the agreement for pretty much the life of the agreement, but one of the things that we included in there was a requirement that all programming from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. during those prime-time hours would be local programming. We required them to do the same thing as far as meetings, so they would record City Commission meetings, Planning Commission, Building Advisory Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, Heritage Commission, Accessibility Advisory Board, Human Relation Commission. We also included special sessions or study sessions of those meetings, so anything that would be recorded in here and in the study session meeting room would be required there. Another thing that we required that's kind of outside the norm is that we said, we asked them to replay those meetings a minimum of two times within the next six days. The intent there was to kind of have them figure out a way to get a regular schedule going, so, you know, you have the meeting on Monday at 4:00, and then say they replay it again at 6:00 on Wednesday and 6:00 on Friday, so there'd be more opportunity for people to see those meetings during the week. So all the city meetings that are recorded would be required to be played on the government and educational channel at least two more times before the next meeting. We came to an agreement on the additional fee. If we requested they record meetings that aren't listed in the agreement, we actually have that currently. We kind of have a side agreement for additional meetings. We've requested over time where we pay them a little bit of additional money. So we came to an agreement on what that would be. We set that at $25 per hour with a two-hour minimum, and then $20 per hour after that. So if we said in the future, we want you to do the Animal Control Advisory Board or Solid Waste, you know, we'd have to go back and talk about the, and pay them a little bit of extra money for those. We require a website that would provide a weekly schedule, as I kind of mentioned a little bit before, a platform where they would livestream the media, or the meetings on demand. Viewing would be available as well, and then an archive of all of our past meetings so that you could, you know, find if you're looking for something that happened in the past. One of the big things that we spent a lot of time talking about was closed captioning. And in the agreement, we have that closed captioning on the government and educational channel would be in place by January 1st, which would be the first day of the new agreement. We did allow them to have a little bit more time to figure out how to get that on the second channel. It's not just as easy as buying one machine. There's a lot of intricacies in trying to figure out how to make that work with both channels and some additional expense as well, so we didn't feel like it was pertinent to have that all upfront. One of the biggest things was monthly reporting requirements. This is something that the old agreement didn't have. We just required an annual, we required an annual budget and then a strategic plan. This requires monthly reports, and that includes things like the number of programs produced, the number of producers, the number of public meetings that are recorded, website analytics, social media analytics, showing the number of views, people that have been visiting websites and social media, the number of volunteers and volunteer hours that they've had, a report of any issues or broadcasting errors to the city, their staffing levels, their yeardate revenue expenditures, and then results of any of their fundraising efforts, and all the meetings, minutes of the SMC board as well. Basically, what we're trying to do is get a picture of what the viewership looks like and what it is that they're doing over there. That's something that we've not had. We have it on an annual basis, but we don't have anything that's kind of ongoing. One of the things I do want to note is that viewership is not available. We cannot figure out, we don't have any reporting on how, how many people are watching on the PEG channels on Cox. So that's why we've kind of tried to go towards some of the website analytics and some of the social media, find out what the YouTube views, those sorts of things are. We also talked about the provisions that outline the process for transfer of property upon termination. That was something that was important to them. They do have some equipment that they purchased with grant funds or money that's not necessarily city funds, so moving forward, they would be recording any of those things, writing down what it is that they purchased outside of city dollars in case termination were to happen. The term of the new agreement would begin on January 1st, 2020, and it would run through December 2020. It would be the same as the current agreement, would have automatic renewal unless we provide notice of termination by July 1. I do want to mention that the updated agreement does provide protections to the city should there be any changes with federal law or state law in regard to franchise fees. There is some FCC kind of opinions that have gone through recently. They've said that the cost of the actual fair market value of the channel is something that they could recover from the city. So the rule, the Communications Act of 1934 says that total franchise fees can't be more than 5%. And so what the FCC has said is that the actual value of that channel is something they can put towards that 5%. We have talked to Cox, and they have said that they feel like the value of that channel, if they were to sell it to somebody else, for each channel would be about $1.2 million. So if, we're not really sure when that's all going to happen. I mean, the FCC hasn't determined methodology and the timeline for any of that, but it is something we think is probably imminent. I mean, at some point, it probably is going to happen, so we don't want to have an agreement with SMC that we can't fulfill. If they do take that action, then we have to, I mean, those channels will cost a couple of million dollars, wouldn't make much sense for us to keep going on the PEG channels. Outside of those provisions, everything else is pretty much the same. There is a red line copy of the agreement in your packet, so you can see line by line what did change. SMC has already started to implement some of the changes and actually kind of plan for the future. They've got a plan for equipment replacement that would help them to get kind of up to speed on some of the video quality and those sorts of things. They've already started to record study sessions, and they have a plan where they could put a camera in there that wouldn't be the tripod camera that they could put in place. I do want to mention, there have been some recent issues with recording of the commission meetings. We've had several occasions where the broadcast didn't start on time, or maybe it finished a little bit early and didn't get the entirety of the meeting. There've been some audio issues. I think we actually had some a little bit earlier tonight, not just in the room, but there's also been audio issues on the actual cable channel. We've had some complaints of people saying that they couldn't understand, or they had to turn their volume up on their TV up to maximum volume just in order to hear, and even at maximum volume, they had a hard time hearing. I do want to say that SMC's recent performance is probably not a representative sample. They've gone through a lot of staff changes, a lot of staff turnover in the last six or seven months, but there have been performance concerns over time, so I don't want to say that it's not completely representative. We did do just a preliminary view of some alternate service providers before the study session that was reported out to you guys. There are other people that can provide services as far as the commission meetings go. We have one company that said that they could do it with about a $50,000 upfront cost and then $100,000 annual renewal. I've had a couple of other companies call me during this timeframe and say that they could do it for even cheaper, but based on your guidance as far as negotiating contract with SMC, I haven't, you know, gone any further. We haven't got any real estimates or sent out an RFP or anything like that. I do want to mention that alternate providers would not be able to provide some of the services that SMC provides as far as the local production and video content. They wouldn't run the access center. They wouldn't be able to provide the local training that SMC does. One of the topics that's come up as we have gone through this process is trying to figure out how to determine the viewership of the SMC content, and as I said earlier, there's really no way to get the viewership on the PEG channels. But we did kind of do just a little bit of a review of what they have uploaded to YouTube. They posted 569 videos on YouTube from January 1 to earlier last week, and 218 of those videos, or about 39%, were government meetings, and that includes the city, county, and school board meetings. About another 5% of the programming is stuff that's required as part of the agreement that we currently have. That would be SAL News, Your City in Action. There's a couple of programs that are called out in the agreement. The remaining 334 videos had 15 programs that were not local to Salina or the region, and then there were 319 local programs. There's a list in your packet, and I'm not going to list all the names of those. Viewership, though, we did look at the number of views. There's, since January of 2018, there's only been three videos that have had more than 500 views, and one of those was a lead sled car show coverage. It had about 3,000 views. The Republican debate had 1,700 views, and then there was a Your City in Action where they looked at the police K-9 unit that got 685 views. The majority of the videos posted on YouTube have gotten, and that's about 63%, have gotten less than 25 views. They have had some videos that have had, been pretty successful. There was one video since 2010, it was a few years ago, that had 122,000 views, and that was a Your City in Action where they went through a police patrol vehicle and just kind of looked at everything as part of that. And then they had another video that had 44,000 views, and that is the Linden Tree wood carving where they carved a fishing lure. So they have had some success as far as viewership on a few programs, but they really haven't had a great deal of viewers, at least on the YouTube, and that's really all we have to go off of as far as viewership, is the numbers we got from YouTube. As far as the fiscal note, cable franchise fee, it's set at 5%. As I said earlier, that generates about $550,000 annually. The current agreement dedicates 40% of that to Salina Media Connection. The amount that the city paid to Salina Media Connection is generally around $220,000 a year, sometimes a little higher, sometimes a little lower. And there are no statutory requirements that we use any of that money, any of the franchise fee revenue towards the PEG channels or Salina Media Connection. That's just something that the governing body's elected to do. So you have a couple of options here. You could approve the resolution and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Salina Media Connection. You could approve that resolution with amendments to the agreement as you see fit. We could postpone this to a later time and provide staff further direction, or you could deny the approval altogether and provide staff with further direction. Based on the guidance that was given on June 17th, the agreement that we have, we feel like is a good agreement. It does, it does set the guidelines as far as monthly reporting and reporting from Salina Media Connection. It's something we think we'd be able to kind of track the progress and see where things go. We didn't do a holistic view of the other providers, you know, just a one-for-one cost basis. If that's something that you would like us to do, we surely could do that in the future, but if your intent is to move forward with Salina Media Connection, we believe that the agreement that we have in front of you is a good one. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions, and then Greg Stevens is here, and I think he's got some board, he's here somewhere.
Your other shoulder.
Yes. Greg Stevens is here, and I think he's got some board members as well. So that was long.
Very informative. Two words, I was doing some math on the blue sheet. On the blue sheet, it's bottom of page three. One thing that I found out when I spoke with the city manager, and I didn't realize, that $1.2 million per channel, that's an annual payment, not just a buy it once and it's yours.
Correct. And that came from a conversation that I had with kind of our public government representative from Cox, and that was at my prompting to say, do you have any type of benchmark? And so I can't tell you whether that is a Wichita price, a Chicago price, and East Coast price. That was just kind of what she was able to offer up as an example of channel value. FCC recognizes they've yet to come up with an approach, but the expectation would be that's an ongoing value that's being provided in terms of channel capacity, and that, like the other in-kind services, free cable service or data lines, the city of Salina doesn't receive any of those, but some communities do. All of that would be reduced from the 5% distribution, which is the maximum allowed in terms of a franchise fee. So that's a long way to say, $1.2 million was kind of a number that she was aware of and is per channel, and the expectation would be that that would be an annual cost to be recovered.
All right. And that same, just two lines down, the remaining amount occurring to the general plan, I think that should be 327,000, not 220,000.
Yeah, I think that would be correct. 550 total, 220 going to, 220 going to Salina Media Connection, so you're correct. It'd be 327.
Okay. And I know you guys are going to have more interesting questions, but in looking at the 2015 agreement, Section 1, subsection K, it's on page 4 of those white sheets in the back. Okay, the special needs group, supports special needs groups, including but not limited to hearing impaired and those with physical and mental disabilities. Would that have allowed for closed captioning all along since 2015?
Yeah, I think that's more in regards to their training, if a group came in and they wanted to, you know, use their services at the community access center, I think that's what would be-
Not on the pro-
Right. I don't think that has, I don't think that's directly correlated to the actual programming on the channel, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any questions specifically for Mr. Wood?
Well-
We're going to have Mr. Stevens come up, but just as far as the information part.
I'm going to ask you to look in your crystal ball, or for you to look in yours. This FCC decision, is there any sense on when they will have some sort of a rubric established for assessing costs and when those costs would be due? I mean-
In reading the FCC determination, I didn't, I was surprised to see the acknowledgement that needed to be deferred and a recognition that that methodology hadn't been set up, but it didn't offer up any type of timeline. I think the wording is such that it is forthcoming at some point, but I'm not able to ascertain from that when.
Okay. And then, I'm not sure if this is a city question or if it's a Salina Media Connection question, but I just want to confirm that, does the city own the equipment that's in this room, or does the building authority? And I'm pretty sure we had, I had an email to that effect from Linda Johnson, and I can't remember what it said.
The city owns, well, the city purchased the equipment upfront, but we've- The city owns, well, the city purchased the equipment upfront, but we've turned it over to the building authority. And any additional, anything additional, any upgrades would be the responsibility of the city.
Of the city, not the building authority.
Not the building authority.
Okay, okay. And then I think that's all I have for staff.
So if we're looking at improving the quality, then equipment needs to be purchased. It will be purchased by us, not through the funds to?
No, it would be purchased by Salina Media Connection out of the funds that they already have.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I was getting a little confused about that, too. So if we need to upgrade, say like the microphones or the audio in this room to get a better product out for people to be able to listen to, Salina Media Connection or the city buys the new equipment for this room? That's, that's, I've got myself so confused.
You could go either way. I mean, we could purchase it, but the Salina Media Connection does have a plan for upgrading the equipment in this room in order to meet the intent of the new agreement. So they will, and I don't know as far as microphones and the audio system, how that works, whether that's all new, but it will be integrated into new cameras and whatever their new system is. So they do have a plan for that.
But if we were to have a third party handle the production of these, an outside entity, they may, that 100,000 you mentioned, or 50,000 for equipment may include revamping this equipment up here, these microphones.
Yes, that would, that's correct.
Yeah, I think one of the points of distinction, and Mr. Stevens might be able to speak to this more specifically, but I think historically, there hasn't been a lot left over from the city's allocation to Salina Media Connection, nor has there been a lot of other income for Salina Media Connection. So they, you know, like any other organization, kind of fallen into a budget where equipment is a deferred maintenance item and a capital improvement purchase that hasn't fit into the budget very well. With an alternate provider, with those costs coming down, that frees up revenue to be put towards equipment, but I'm not sure what their current plan is for acquisition of equipment. I know in the past, there's been, each annual report might have had $10,000 or $20,000 of items identified, and on occasion, there'd be conversation about whether the city could contribute more towards equipment.
And I'm not sure how unique the Salina Media Connection is to other communities, but I guess one question is, what do we owe the public as far as broadcasting? I mean, is it meetings, study sessions? What is our requirement?
I don't know that there's actually any requirement, per se. It's more what our preference is. Jacob indicated that we've really kind of focused on this agreement. If you want to know what our peer communities are doing and what services they're providing, that wouldn't be hard information to gather. I think it's pretty common for communities our size and larger to have a robust coverage of their meetings and make that available online and over cable peg channels.
One other question, as far as the monthly reporting, was there any mention of any specific targets that would need to be met?
No, we didn't put any, anything specific. I mean, we don't have a baseline at this point, so it's really hard for us to say we want a certain number of views. We really don't have that baseline data to compare anything to at this point. I mean, that could be something that in future years, we could, once we pin down kind of what we have now, that we could look at. But no, there weren't any actual performance measures included in the document.
And one question I didn't have until just a few minutes ago. The contract states basically that if Salina Media Corporation were to not be in existence or be decided to not fund this with anyone, the equipment we've purchased reverts back to the city. But now, this has already been given to the building authority? Would that then still come back to the city or stays with the building authority?
With the city providing the bulk of the funding historically, it's kind of been a city purchase. So you really have two things going on. The conversation we had with Salina Media Connection was, without a lot of good, without record keeping, the presumption is that it was purchased with city funds. And so as it relates to the relationship between the city and Salina Media Connection, if they can demonstrate the equipment was purchased with other funds, then they might be able to make a claim to retaining that equipment. When we talk about city ownership, we'll still need to sort through whether it has value, whether it should stay in the building, whether it would stay in use, that type of thing. But with the building authority recognizing, you know, it was purchased by the city and any additions are the city's responsibility, we'd have to take that up at the point that we would be making that transition.
Right. Now, inventory was mentioned, and is there a requirement that, or an initial inventory or current inventory be created before the contract takes, before January 1?
No, the current contract doesn't anticipate an inventory. Basically, it says that anything that they have is kind of presumed to be ours unless they can prove that it's been purchased with outside funds. So they would have to provide proof that they purchased it.
But we don't know what they have technically. I mean, was that an inventory?
Well, that's true.
So we'd be relying on any list that they presented to us?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we certainly could do an inventory as part of the agreement. That would not be, we could add that in.
One other question that comes to mind, since it's always, and I've been here during the entire creation and existence of Access TV and SMC, it's always bothered me they could never give us any viewership information. When you say there are so many clicks, we're using YouTube possibly as a reference for viewership.
Right.
Is a click watching something, or is it just clicking on it for, because you were interested in the title or the subject? Does it mean the people stayed with it, or did they just get on a second?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that on YouTube. Now, we did ask specifically for data from their website that shows that they clicked on the page that shows the viewership page. So I don't know, I don't know that there's data that provides, you know, whether they watched the first 30 seconds or they watched the entire video. And I'm not sure how YouTube does that either, but we could certainly do some research and find those things out.
All right. Thank you. Don't go far. Mr. Stevens, come on down. Do you have board members with you here this evening? Because if so, if you want to come down front, you don't want to come down front. Okay.
And staff member.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm Greg Stevens, 842 South Tent. And I want to thank Jacob for, where to go, all of his time, because we did spend a lot of time kind of working on the new contract. And I'm sure there's other staff members that have helped out with this. 27 years ago, Community Access Television was chartered with community leaders, and they had a good vision. And our vision yet today is to create a difference through media. And we know that the, we know the media world's changing, and digital media has challenges. And we also know that there's less local news around. And those factors really do open the door for new opportunities and ways to meet, new ways to meet community needs. And we feel that what we've been doing for the last four or five months has been positioning ourselves. What's happened here has actually been good for us, because what it's done is it's forced us to kind of really dig deeply and start making calls and doing research and networking with other community access stations and the people in the world of access television to find out what they're doing, because they're challenged, too, to a certain extent.
I can speak to the FCC question. Actually, I have strong contacts in the FCC. And also, the Alliance for Community Media does provide monthly telephone calls and direct interaction for any of the 1,500 community access television stations around the country. And they do have some influence. And there's a whole host of congressional representatives that have signed on to finding a way to maintain the democracy that local government meetings and also community stories brings to a community, especially in times in which newspapers are struggling. We've been very deliberate in moving forward. We had a group come in and give us some bids on the study session. And Alan back here and some of our staff have been able to come up with a plan that I think is less than half the cost. And you know by attending the study sessions that we've had different cameras in there and different microphones. And we've already purchased a microphone, and we're, we can integrate PowerPoint into what's going on back here, both in there and out here. And we also are prepared to buy a camera back there that would be a tilt, pan, zoom, and operate it out here. So we have a microphone that works, and it's a lot more easier to set up than the four or five that we set up around what's going on. And Alan can still operate the meetings back there like we're doing out here. So we're ready to do that. In fact, we have all the specs written up and the flow chart sheet, and I have it right There's a lot of positives to what we've been doing. And some information that's in the packet, I want to try to clarify if I can. During four months in 2018, we averaged 55 shows on two channels. In August and September, we averaged 202 shows on the two channels. So we've more than doubled the number of shows that we're doing by going out in the community, because we've changed our emphasis a little bit from providing those old programs to now taking the camera out and trying to cover a lot more programs. And there are several programs that we've covered that aren't in your packet. For example, we've done the Pisces submarine program and quite a few other ones around In September, our government and education shows, we had 35 of them. They played 154 times. And there is another way to determine how many people are watching these shows, and that's through Earth Channel. We've used Earth Channel a long time before we started using YouTube, and that's a channel that a lot of people are accustomed to watching. And you don't have the Earth Channel statistics in your packet. But there were 797 people that watched the live streams through Earth Channel, and I suspect that they didn't then go over to YouTube and watch them on YouTube. Because we're offering two choices where you can get video on demand, both YouTube and on Earth Channel. There were 1,652 hits, and we can determine how long people watched, because it gives us those numbers. Most of the time on a long show, the city and government shows, people don't watch all of them. They'll watch some of them, but they'll watch the shorter shows for longer periods of time, as you would expect. The city commission shows have had 60% of the viewership compared to all the other shows that are being done for city and county and education shows. So your programs are the most popular ones. And there's been, since January, 13,973 times in which people have viewed them through Earth Channel, not counting YouTube. They viewed them through YouTube, but Earth Channel was the channel that we were using for quite a few years. And we've just started trying to promote our YouTube a lot more, because there was some emphasis to try using social media, because Earth Channel's not considered social media. It's another TV channel that does video on demand, which you can play the shows at a later time. And it also does our live streaming. So we have people that are watching through live streaming. We have people that are watching through YouTube, and we have people that are watching through YouTube. And whether they're watching it or not, I think it's important to realize that having the opportunity to go back and watch might be just about as important as watching it. If there's something that somebody says took place in a meeting, if viewers can go back and watch it, I think they're going to want that. And that's one of the things that we're offering. Another thing that we're doing that's a real positive is we've never really focused on trying to go out into the community and gather stories. We were, like almost other access stations, we were a place where people would come in and learn and be trained, and they could provide content for their organization or for the story they wanted to tell. Well, now, because media's changed, you can do that on your cell phone and everything else. So we're having to go out. And so that takes a different kind of a skill. And we have Jason Beats, who is now helping us, training our staff to help us do that. And he does a different kind of a story. If you've watched Feast on the Fay, we did a shorter story, and it was kind of a news kind of a story. And we had quite a few people that have clicked on it on YouTube compared to what we've done on the other ones. And Fay for the Cure also, which we did a longer story, but he also did the editing for that. So what we want to do is to try to extend ourselves out into the community more, and that's why we have these 101 shows per month that we're doing over the last two months. We've made a really strong effort to try to accommodate some of the things that we heard when we did the study session and the other meeting, is that people want to see local content and not the canned shows that we offer. And we still do a few canned shows. We do Democracy Now! because it's the most important media program on access TV. We do Healthy Cooking. We do Faith Life. We do Graceful Aging, and there's a few other ones, too, that we do. And these are all pretty useful for people to be watching. We've doubled our hours of volunteers since March. We've increased our membership above our budget goals. We've increased our contributions above budget goals, and we've received two grants. So we're looking forward to continuing to provide the services that we've been providing. We're going to do the cultural crawl next week and the following week, where we have 700 seventh graders coming through the facility. We have three students that now work there part-time, and we have a program that we're doing, which is the Career to Work Program, where we have a high school kid, that student that's coming in and has been useful. So we're extending ourselves out into the educational world. So we appreciate your vote and all the tough questions you're going to ask, because we've had our ups and downs, no question about it. But I think there's opportunities here for us that can help Salina. This is Salina's TV, and we're a city of 50,000. The 1.2 million, when I talked to the Alliance for Community Media people, they were really surprised. There's no other cable company that's putting out a number. And that number, they thought, that should apply to a major metropolitan area and not to a place like Salina. Furthermore, I don't think that's going to happen right away, if it does happen, because it's a kind of a political thing, and there are lawsuits that are going to occur. That's going to slow it down. And finally, there are seven states that are now assessing fees to the streaming world, like Netflix and whatever. So if the funds go away for what we're doing here, because of these other services that are provided, there are communities all over the Northeast and the West Coast that really rely upon access television for a whole host of things. I think there's going to be another funding stream that will emerge. So I would hope that we would maintain the possibility of having the best community access program in the state, because it's a marketing tool that we can use. We just need to do better at it over there, and I think we can, with the help of everybody in the community. So I stand for questions.
Okay, we'll start from Commissioner Ryan.
I have none.
Commissioner Habeck.
A couple things. One of the things I've heard a concern about, and I think we've talked about this, Greg, is, and I do, again, I do want to say I like what I heard about more local programming as far as going out and trying to get more of the community involved. People like to see themselves on television, and they like to see different local events covered. My question is, how are we going to make it so individuals know how to find those and what has been, what programs have been done? Because that's one of the things I kind of hear, is I don't know where to find any, you know, these programs. I don't know when they're. I don't know when they're, when they're airing mainly on, on television. You know, if they don't want to go to YouTube or something, how, how, how are we going to address that, I guess Greg?
Well, that's a really good question. We need to do a better job in marketing what we're doing. Putting it on our webpage is not enough. We have it on the Earth Channel. That's not enough because people, only the people that know Earth Channel and want to go there know it. We have to start attracting more people. Putting an ad in the Salina Journal, I don't know if we can afford that. That's something that we really need to think about. I don't think we've, even though we're in the, the media business, I don't know if Access Television or Salina Media Connection has done a very good job marketing for a long, long time. And we can maybe make little cards, but we have to be consistent in our program before we start going out and saying, here's what we're going to do. And Alan's putting together a really good schedule of when programs are playing. So he's got it set up on Cablecast, which is a system we use. If we, and he's been able to do this within twenty-four hours. He'll go over and get this done tonight or first thing in the morning, and he'll have it scheduled out at the times he's scheduling. But we're adding some new meetings, so we have to put all those in, and we don't know how long that they all run, so it's a little bit of a challenge. When we do get new equipment and we plan on buying new equipment, it's going to give our image a whole different look. We'll be able to, instead of have that bulletin board run, which hap, the way it works now is we run a program, when the program ends, a bulletin board comes on. And people probably flip the channel and go somewhere else. We'll be able to still have a, a video in the bulletin board. So we're going to be able to, it's, it's called, oh, there's a name for it, where they, it's squeezing. So we're going to have a squeeze program to squeeze down the image into that. And if we're consistent, and, and what Alan's doing right now is he's posting on the channel all the times in which we're, the programs are being played now. But it's going to take a while for that to kind of catch, catch, catch on, plus we have to make it look really sharp and nice so people will want to watch it and they can remember it. So.
The other thing is, you know, we're looking at doing a, you know, a one-year contract. We're doing one-year renewables. Do you see that as being a detriment to trying to hire a new executive director? I mean, uh...
Well, two things. All of this has not been real helpful to hiring an executive director, but be that as it may, that's, that's where we're at. It might be kind of a detriment to fundraising if the idea is that possibly people would give us money and then we wouldn't be here. I think that's the biggest detriment we have. But what we've negotiated in the contract, whereas if we can raise funds and that money stays, although I don't know if that's ideal because if you have some equipment, but you don't have everything that you need, that's not real ideal. I know when I worked, when I was on the board of another nonprofit in town that was, how do I say this? That was allowed to function because a family pretty much let them have the property for a year, but they had the opportunity to take it if it ever went defunct. That really limited fundraising for that organization until they worked out that issue. And, but if we have to live with that, we'll live with it. We have been able to raise funds now going forward under the new contract. Well, I, I think we'll be okay. But it'd be nice to have it like a three-year contract or something like that.
Well, and, and I, I agree. I think right now with, you know, with some of the, my concerns are the, you know, the, the board turnover that I've seen and the executive directors. I mean, if, if we see some stability, you know, from SMC, then I could see doing a longer contract, so. And I, I, I know that puts you in a bit of a bind, but I think that's, you know, where we're kind of at right now.
We have a really good board now. Uh, we've had, we did have turnover about four or five months ago, six months ago. And we've had some people leave since then, but that's kind of normal in some ways. But our board now is, is good, and I'm real proud of them. And we do have some openings. And I got one more thing I want to say to the audience is if you're making a show, bring it down to Salina Media Connection. We'll put it on the air. We got two channels. One channel is for those shows that people make. And where else can you go and get your show on the air at little or no cost? So that's one of the ways that we're going to really start having more of these local shows. People can make shows, let's just bring them in and put them on the air. We can help, we can put, help you put them on the air. Doesn't take very much effort.
And is there, I'm going to ask a question. Is there any guidelines as to what those, content of those shows can be?
Can't be any commercials. But, you know, you could do a show about title business, which you can't sell yourself.
Boy, that'll put people to sleep. That'll get a lot of hits.
And I have to tell you that KSN comes up here and uses our studio on a regular basis. And the doctors here, the met from Salina, I don't know Trent, if you've been in there, but four or five of them come in like we're there last Friday, and they make these little short shows that they're putting on TV down there. It's because we've got a great studio.
They pay you?
What?
Do they pay you?
We get a, we get a, a small fee.
We touched on the contracts. For our purposes, really don't have a year to show results because we have to decide by June 30th of every year, the way the contracts are structured now, if we intend to either automatically renew or like we did this year, renegotiate the contract. What do you see being able to accomplish by June 30th?
Well, it's all based on the budget. And we've been as frugal as we could be, but we've also focused on trying to improve the little things, which is the little pieces of equipment that have been kind of neglected over the years. I think we can have new equipment over there, and that new equipment there allows us to do other things. The closed captioning. If we're going to do closed captioning, we have to have the ability to talk to the new equipment. We've got four options for closed captioning. That's our biggest challenge. And doing closed captioning on the, on Channel 21 where we run a lot of programs that don't necessarily have good quality audio sometimes, the audio in here will be okay. I mean, there'll be some glitches here or there. I think this is going to be okay. I think we'll have that done. We're supposed to have it done by January the first. The one in May the 15th is, like I said, we have four different paths that we're thinking about going down. Since that other channel runs a lot of programming and since most of these companies charge so much an hour, it's hour-based, and thirty hours is kind of the standard. Everything over thirty starts costing you more. We may have to go with a more expensive encoder so that we have the ability, if we grow our programs, to do closed captioning on all the programs. So that's, that's our biggest challenge. We're probably going to have to do more fundraising to make that happen.
And where do you stand with staff right now as far as being able to get the meetings up for viewers within certainly forty-eight hours?
We've been, all of these meetings have been happening in twenty-four hours. And it's forty-eight in the contract because there'll be times in which somebody will get sick or something like that. And I, my concern is if we miss one of these, I mean, there are a lot of things in this contract that I think somebody could come back and say, you missed it here and you missed it there, and we're supposed to self-report every time something happens. Well, currently as it stands, if a lightning storm comes through, you know, something may shut off, and we got to get up in the middle of the night and do it, and that gives us a black screen or something. If we have to self-report all those kinds of things and they're held against us, it's not a very positive. And we do have backup, uh, a, devices that allow the machines to run for eight or fifteen minutes, but with new equipment, we shouldn't have that much of a problem. But the staff has been doing a real good job of getting the programs, I'm talking basically since Alan's come in, getting them running real quickly. So I think that shouldn't be a problem. But technically, Dr. Davis, here's the deal is, we almost need to have a lot of cross-training. We need to have two or three people trained to do everything that's done there. Because if somebody quits or something happens, then even if it's documented, it's going to take a while for people to get up to speed. That, that is a challenge, going to be a challenge for anybody that comes in here and tries to do this kind of work.
Well, if it makes you better, I flew here from Chicago and United this morning, and they had a problem with the plane, and they asked us to get off and get on another plane. Well, I felt very good about that because I'd rather fix it on the ground before we take off than, than later. So that didn't bother me. Two questions. These are thornier questions. From the outside looking in, it looked as though there were some rocky seas for the, the board. And while you're up here taking all the heat, so to speak, the contracts actually with the board of Salina Media and not with you, Greg Stevens, you know, as an individual, how stable do you think the board is now? And, and, I mean, was there any problem with, with the board before that should cause us concern or the current board even, that you'd be able to deliver all the, I'm, so your board is more a planning board than a hands-on board, or, or actually make that a question? But, but where do you see our comfort level with your current board sitting?
The board has probably not been a working board for a long time. There are board members now that are working board members. So all that board development, we could probably do a lot more at that, with that, but we've been faced with all these other issues that have kind of stood in front of board development, you might say. I'd probably say. Some of the turnover that's taken place that's not board-related is personnel-related, and I don't feel comfortable talking about that kind of thing. I would let the board come up here and speak if they wanted to about what it is that they're doing, how they feel about the board. My experience on boards is you get all kinds of personalities and everybody's busy in their lives, and when you have, you're hiring an executive director and you got equip, you're buying new equipment and you're negotiating a contract, there's a big commitment of time to address all these kinds of issues. And I think we've done a pretty good job in what we've done. And maybe we haven't, well, I'm kind of an interim guy here. I kind of stepped in in March. And I didn't consider my role to be one that's going to go out and try to set a lot of agendas because I thought that was the role of the next executive director. And it might have been a time in which there need to be a more of a public profile person speaking, but, which may have caused the opportunity for people to raise more questions. But I think from what I've seen and experienced, I think we've stood up to the task that we've had to stand up to.
And again, outside looking in, there's a perception that some of the prior directors have, have either been alienated from access or for whatever reason have disengaged. Is there, do you share that view or is there a plan to re-engage them, reintegrate them into the, the program?
I don't think we've ever tried to exclude anybody that's a past volunteer or participant or board member.
Looking at the numbers of, you know, original productions, and those numbers seem to be less than a few years ago, or significantly less than a few years ago.
Our production numbers now are higher than they're from years, a few years ago.
And that, and not counting the meetings? Let me make that, just individual programming?
Oh yeah, they're, they're over double what they were. We were doing, we were hitting our twenty mark, which a contract had. And then we did about sixteen city and county meetings. Well, we're doing more city and county meetings because you, there's been a request for more plus the study sessions. But the other meetings, we've, we're at thirty, forty, fifty.
Well, I was talking about productions other than meetings.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. The, the, the media productions have been developed, there's twenty-five, thirty percent increase in them with the same number of staff, I might say. I mean, we got three students that are kind of working plus one or two more people. I've been going out and doing a bunch too.
And because the amount that's forwarded to Salina Media is obviously more than what it would have cost just to produce the meetings, but for me, that, that, it's a loss leader because of the, the cultural aspect and benefits we get from, from the channel. So I don't mind that mismatch.
You mean the budget that you're talking about?
Right. I mean, we could, we could do the meetings for less than the total that's, that's at. But for me, you know, the, the meetings are, are just a small portion of, of what we're paying money for. It's, and again, it's part of Salina's identity. Not all cities our size have this, this benefit.
We do all the legislative sessions. I don't know if Swaget would do those unless you had them in here. We did all the city, uh, school board. We sat down and did like a twenty and thirty-minute kind of discussion, and I don't know if that would have happened. I think those kinds of things are, are what community engagement's about. And good democracy is an informed citizenship. So I think that's a role that we're playing that you won't get if we only do the meetings that we're doing.
No, I, I have a whole page of suggestions for, you know, topics other than the media. I mean, health, fitness, composting, yoga, I mean, you could do a whole, whole bunch of stuff. But are there, you think you have enough producers in the community that can be re-engaged to?
One of the things that I've noticed being kind of a volunteer over the years is there's never a shortage of suggestions. It's, there's a shortage of people to go and help do the work. And it takes camera people, and that's easy to do. But it takes editors where you edit, and that's pretty easy to do too. And there are people doing it, and that's why I said, all these groups that are doing this, bring your shows down, let's put them on TV. That will cause more of a snowball effect and we can get more going on. And we can do this studio work if we could, we just, we need, if, we've got one or two people that are pretty good at it, but we need to, it'd be good to have a couple more that would help out.
And, and the current financing would allow you to pay those folks?
Labor is always a really significant cost of any budget, as you well know. And if we're going to buy closed captioning equipment and new equipment this year, we've al, we've received three checks from the city this year, and I don't know if we're going to get the fourth one until next year. We're on, last year we got four or five, I don't know. I mean, it, it's kind of up and down. Sometimes they roll over. Uh, so we're actually on a tighter budget than we were last year. Last year we had money left over. This year we're on a tighter budget and we're trying to do all these upgrades. So I, I would say next year it's going to be better for us.
And is the board engaged in fundraising?
We've done a better job in contributions. We've been, better job in achieving grants. We've done a better job in memberships. And over the years, we could have always done a better job in fundraising. So fundraising will be critical.
I guess I'll extend the opportunity again to, see the cameras don't angle all the way back in that corner. People know where to sit if they don't want to be on TV.
There's some great board members back here.
Right. In fact, that, that third camera you get needs to be over here so you can pan into that corner. But if, if any of the board members would like to come up and speak.
The cameras in here are situated about as good as you can get them because of these things.
May I ask one more question? As it seems to me, the, the original vision and in the community, community engagement portion of this, that there'd be producers developed in the community that people were going to be interested in, in bringing their perspective, their organization's issues to you, and you would develop a, a volunteer base that would be both trained to be producers and editors and, and the people... base that would be both trained to be producers and editors and the people that actually did that. Do you think you can get back to that? Because it looks to me like right now you guys are busting your chops to do it all yourselves. So, the whole networking portion of it, I don't know how long it's been gone, but it seems to me it's been gone for a great long time.
Well, there was a time in the not-too-distant past when I think we kind of moved away from volunteers. We moved towards a staff-driven organization. And that has its benefits. And if that's where we were heading, then we lost volunteers by doing that. So, we're kind of needing to have volunteers now, so that's kind of been an emphasis. We've got some ideas to explore doing, I won't say news, but more local content in a way. And it's not going to take that many people to do a show once every two weeks, and it could be a real short show. And we could come up with something that could, the city could be a lot, could be more proud of. And I suggest that people flip over to the channel and watch it in the evenings and just see what's going on if you haven't for awhile. Because the board doesn't run as much, and I very much agree with what's suggested that we should run local content from 6:00 to 10:00 at night. That's a great idea. We should have been doing that a long time. If we can do that, we're going to bring our viewer base back, because that's what people want, is local content. Can we get the volunteers back? We can get a few students from the schools. And Salina actually has, we have this arts community, and this videography is an art. And one of the things that's becoming more popular is podcasting. We're going to put a podcasting room in there. If we can stay current with what's going on, people will come in, I think. I really believe that they will. And it doesn't take too many.
I have one more question. I know you haven't had any.
No, 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 no. Go ahead.
And I know, Greg, you have a passion for this, and one of our discussions has been, you know, the lack of an executive director and maybe staff. If you would not have been available and stepped up, where would we be at right now?
Somebody else would have stepped up.
Maybe.
Well, then we'd have been in trouble, maybe. I don't know. Nobody would have stepped up. I was, you know, I was kind of thinking about going off the board when, at the beginning of the year. And I've been a member of Access since it started, but I do have a master's in communication. And business is where I went, but I also did an undergraduate and a graduate in communication, some radio and TV and whatever. So, I always liked it, and that's why I kept my toe in the water there. And it's getting a lot easier to do, and it's fun to do.
I know you spent a lot of time here recently, and I do have a concern that if you wouldn't have been here, I'm not sure where we would be at today with.
Well, on the radio. I might not be here tomorrow, who knows what will happen to me, but we've got good people in the studio. One of our staff has 10 years military experience. She did public information in the military. Now, she's going a different direction in her career, but she goes into all these different areas and tackles them and figures them out, and does an outstanding job. And we've got some other people too. And we've got people that want to go to work for us. So, it's not like we're totally stagnant. And we need your help promoting us.
Okay. And that was the perfect transition to what I was going to say. And that was to staff and to the governing body in terms of, have we contemplated how we can cross-promote with Salina Media Connection? And what I'm specifically thinking of is if you go to the USD 305 website, they have all their candidate profiles on their homepage for their candidates for school board. And I'm just wondering if one of our rotating banners needs to be some kind of a link to Salina Media Connection, so people that are landing on our homepage at least are going to be exposed to that. And, you know, even if it's just as simple as an image that says, want to meet the candidates, want to watch, want to catch up on a meeting, you know, click here. I think that, you know, to be your partners in this too, I think we, it's incumbent upon us to try to think what we can do to help direct people to your site and expose them to all the different things that you can do. I mean, we can switch the message up. I mean, one month it might be, you know, something about, you know, creating your own video content or launching your own podcast. But I'm just trying to think of, since I would assume our site probably draws a lot more traffic than Salina Media Connections, that we probably need to start thinking a little bit more about cross-promotion.
I think that would be real beneficial.
That's a great idea.
And it doesn't cost anything.
After we get our new equipment, our site's going to look a lot better, and it'll be easier to do that. So, that's a few months down the road when we get that all done, two or three months. But, you know, if you can put somebody who has a sincere interest on our board, that would help. That, it could be a staff person, who knows who. But I really think that we've really missed an opportunity in Salina by not working together more. Because a lot of what we have to do now, a lot of our goals are going to be, are being driven by you all. This contract really lays out what we have to do. And not to be a partner with us doing that, I don't think is probably healthy in the long run. Because at some point, you know, it might, I think you need to be there.
And that might be something where, at some point, we talk about making a commission liaison.
Historically, years ago, just from your, do you know if there ever was an official liaison?
There's been provision for it, it just hasn't been sustained, I guess. With respect to the contract, a couple of technical things, I guess. You spoke about the term, and just want to point out, regardless of what might be provided in the agreement, we are subject to the cash basis law. So, even if you entered into a five-year agreement, you're still subject to making an annual appropriation decision at any given year. So, I understand from a fundraising standpoint, most people probably won't understand that and they may get some comfort in a longer-term agreement. But we're just precluded from committing multiple years of financial commitments, with the exception of debt financing. So, and then you kind of mentioned, you brought up the question of specific performance requirements. And we've had them in the prior agreements where we've specified particular programming, the numbers, but we just haven't seen the receptivity to the programming in terms of producing it or viewership. So, we backed that out. And Mayor, you pointed out that there's not a lot in this current contract in terms of performance. There's a lot of performance measures, but not a lot of articulated performance expectations. And I can just tell you from past experience across the board, if you're making your decision based on the vision you heard tonight and you want to then go back and revisit the renewal based on that vision, we probably need to get the details of that vision incorporated into the agreement. I think Mr. Stevens has articulated some of that, and we can reduce that to writing. But the current model is get performance measure information, share that with you, and then as you have to make a renewal decision in June, approaching July, you have some data to go on. If the expectation is to tie back to what you just heard tonight, we probably need to add that level of detail into the agreement as well.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Knowles? Since you did move all the way up.
I did. Well, Nancy Kloster, Mary, 660 South Santa Fe. I am new to the Access Salina Media Connection Board this year, and I just wanted to let you know there is an active board, some of whom can't be here because of your meeting time they're working. You know, you've heard that, right? But Bruce Lacy is here. Right. He moved too. Oh, see, we're moving up. And also that Mike Wilson is a former board member who has stayed very active and been very supportive. So, I think there's a new energy. I think there's a lot that will be happening. I just wanted to really indicate support for Mr. Stevens and what his great commitment has been during this time. And I think he'll see a lot more activity. And I think there is an interest again and an emphasis on bringing back more involvement from volunteers. I have a little bit of experience with that, so I want to bring that to the board, too. So, thank you for all of your attention all this time.
You are the preeminent Salina volunteer, so you should know what you're talking about. Mr. Lacy?
My name is Bruce Lacy, 449 Claremont Drive. And I'm just going to go back a little bit. Back in 2007, we moved here to Salina. And then in 2009, I had a heart surgery. So, I was kind of put down a little bit, but the experience that I have, it's 30 years as an entrepreneur in the entertainment industry. And after having that heart surgery, I was down for awhile. Then in 2009, I had a stroke. So, that took me away also from the industry. And then, let me go back a little bit. When I came, first came here, I went to Access TV and I took a class in, as a producer, a producer class and a editing class. So, I'm really passionate about being here on the board, and then also Greg just put me on the marketing committee. So, I understand I've got a lot of things to do to help market the SMC. So, with all of that in mind, I will be working hard for this SMC. And I really appreciate all the time that you put into being concerned about what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. And I will say this, we will work our hardest to meet your requirements. We really will. Because as a producer and being in the business 30 years, I know what it takes to meet your requirements that is brought out in the contract. And so, I just wanted to let you know, just give us a chance and we'll make it work. We'll make it work real good. We'll work hard for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we should entertain comments from the, it is a public meeting.
Phil Black, 815 Spruce.
Man, I don't know where to begin. I started working with Access in 2004 after I'd run for school board. David Hawkesworth called me, asked me if I'd like to be on the board. I thought, well, how cool is that? So, I showed up at the meeting, he said to show up, and I find out it's an election. And I'm to be elected or not, and I had no idea. And then he said, don't worry about it because we have two or three positions that the board chooses for itself. So, I was chosen. Then about two or three months later, I found out I was supposed to be a member. So, I went and quick wrote a check. That's an important fact to remember. I've served on the board twice. I don't recall any time when people were breaking the doors down to get on Access Board, honestly. We spent, we had committees that did nothing but go out and try to find people to be on the board. So, it's not been one of the most popular boards. And we've gone through everything from, what is a member? Should we charge members? How do you know we have members? It's frankly been very amateur, in my mind. And there are, I think, 12 positions on the board. I don't even know if they have more than one full-time person on staff. It's, there are too many people and it gets, in my time, the last time I was on there was divisive. And there were people who, for instance, you may remember, one member got kind of thrown out of Access for having kind of obscene stuff on there. And he was invited back, and then he finally left. And I believe that person even has a website where he advertises that he will do work as though he is an Access member. I haven't looked in the last few weeks, but still on there, as far as I know. I've done over 40 productions. And disclaimer, we had, when Marnie left as director, there were, the position was opened up, two of us applied, two of us gave presentations, I believe you were there, Commissioner. And my particular presentation, I didn't get the job, but my presentation spoke to what you were saying, that people want to hear themselves. And so, I thought we should document the stories of individuals, families, and institutions in Salina, on the thought that this would be a great way of promoting ourselves as well as gaining interest from them. And the comment I heard was, I've heard it all before. So, I didn't get the job, that's fine, but I felt like the board was in such disarray that, and the whole place was just teeming with backbiting, that I formed my own nonprofit, Kansas Public Media Center, and got tax-exempt status. It's a 501(c)(3) corporation, precisely so that I could write a grant to do like I did with the WWII stories, so that I could have that corporation act as a fiscal agent. Because I really didn't want to have to go through what I consider to be self-inflicting problems for the lack of a steady board and the lack of staff. So, I'm thrilled to see that there's a glowing future ahead, based on Mr. Stevens' report. My only concern as a citizen is that there needs to be some pretty serious oversight. I think you need to be very clear that you want one channel to be community-generated programming, which by the way, there is no competition. There's no other station in the state of Kansas that has community-generated programming. We were the only one. So, yeah, we ought to be doing that, and you ought to be very clear what the standards were. At one point, I went in and did training with the staff, actually with staff-generated decisions, what is minimum, what should be the minimum standards? And like sound quality, what range should it be in? Should the camera move, not move? Under what circumstances is it okay to move? Where should the person be, you know, on center, off the side? All those kinds of things need to be there. And also in terms of training, we just did one little segment where we went through and wrote a training manual based on the staff going through. And we brought two volunteers in who didn't know how to use a camera, so the staff had to train them on that. And then we got feedback from those volunteers as to what worked and what didn't. And from that, I created a training manual just for basic turning on the camera, using automatic, all on manual, no external mics, all of that. And it needed multiple levels that you would have to go through. It's not an easy thing to edit, contrary to what Mr. Stevens may have said. I have Adobe Premiere Pro as well as, and I've used Final Cut Pro, which is the Mac version, an editor. And it's very, very complicated. It's not an easy thing, and this is what makes it difficult for community members to come in and do this. You need to say you can only do certain things that you're trained to do. I think there should be a certification process. And it's, this, as a teacher, I can tell you, my doctor's in education leadership, that going through that kind of training would take at least a year, and it would take considerable amount of time working on that, just to get it to the point where you could say, all right, Mike, you come in, we're going to teach you how to do a couple of levels of camera work and a couple of levels of associated editing that will maintain a minimum quality. And with staff leaving and coming and going, I don't know what they have down there now, but I'd be genuinely concerned that they could do this. So, I hate to be a naysayer. I know that at least two other board members are, I guess you'd call disgruntled, feel like. But what you need to realize is I put a lot of time, my entire time in Salina has been tied almost directly to Access. I got here in 2002, was on the board a little over a year later. And I've- And my life has been here, been tied to that. In fact, that's been my creative outlet because I was no longer a musician. Can't afford the laws of hearing. So, yes.
One minute.
Okay. That's it. That's basically all I wanted to say. Make sure you have enough oversight. Give it some real thought. Make sure you know what's going on over there. It may be all just great now, but please do be careful. It's a lot of money and so, there are a lot of good things that it could do. It's gonna drive me crazy. You remember that show Monk? Where he looked at the, I've been watching that thing sitting on the floor. So, I'm gonna pick it up.
Just wanted to make sure it wasn't moving. That was my only concern, whatever it was. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Any discussion up here? Or while you're thinking, if the issues of rebuilding the, let me rephrase it. For me, it's important that the volunteer staff be rebuilt. Of course, to do that, that will require training. I still would like to have an inventory of what equipment is there. And while probably, well, it might fit in this contract, if we were to consider city commission liaison to their board. And that's not something I'm assuming we can do unilaterally, have to agree to that as well, I'm guessing.
Well, I think it would depend on the role that you want them to serve in. With it being a public meeting, you can certainly have a representative attend.
And there is a provision in the contract that says there could be a staff or commission liaison. So, that's already built in. So, you just need to appoint somebody would be the only thing.
I know who I would consider appointing, and she's not here to defend herself or to say no. Now, is there, are those issues that need to be, if the other commissioners were to agree, spelled out in writing? And I don't know how you phrase, build up your volunteers, but...
Any measure of accountability that you would hope to hold them to later, I would suggest should be added to the agreement. So, if you wanna provide direction and have staff try to draft to that, we can try to come back.
Well, I guess I should first get my fellow commissioners' ideas on that.
I agree with your points. And I, and I agree that there's a rebuilding job here to do. I think there's a lot of potential, the cataloging, the archiving, the public portions, the education portions, those are all really important. But I think we owe it to the community to make sure that what we present to the public is, is the kind of quality that we want to have. So, I think we should look into having a different entity produce the actual programming here and then we provide it to whatever outlets we want it, want to, but it could be distributed through SMC. And that gives us a guarantee on our content getting out there to the taxpayers in a, in a quality fashion. And then if, to me, if they rebuild their organization and satisfy the, the community, the engagement portion of it, the volunteer portion of it, then we could, we could rebuild it. But at this point, I would want to take something out of their budget to, in anticipation of seeing what it costs us to ramp up our ability to transmit the meetings on our own.
I was gonna ask if I was following you correctly, if that would then mean a decrease in the funding?
Yes, I would, I would think that we needed to take the forty to some other level commensurate in what we find out from a third party that might provide the services.
My suspicion is that the, I'm lumping under cultural or public program, benefits from the fact that we probably are overpaying for the meeting part, but knowing that that other money is supporting the, the cultural part. And I don't know if you take out a hundred fifty thousand of this, it'd be enough funds to do anything as far as rebuilding the cultural aspect.
Well, I'm hoping we don't need a hundred, but it may take a hundred in the cut of the budget.
And we only have one company's quote in here, but it was fifty thousand of equipment and a hundred thousand a year. So, at least the first year would be a hundred fifty thousand.
Correct. That, that was just kind of an initial inquiry of them. And I think Mr. Woods had, had other competitors unsolicited contact him to ask for an opportunity to make a competitive proposal.
Yeah, I believe we could do it for cheaper than that, but I don't have a number. I mean, we'd have to see what they say.
Yeah, and I mean, I know that Overland Parks had problems with Swaget specifically coming in, just, you know, way over budget. And I mean, that's the kind of due diligence that, you know, you would want to have the, the time to do. I guess, you know, if, if, if we're holding, if we're expecting, you know, a lot more in terms of quality and quantity of locally-produced programming, to me, it seems a little bit at cross-purposes to, to reduce their already pretty small budget. I mean, if we want to give this a chance of working, I think we at least need to, to, you know, to go forward with the, the provisions that are laid out in this agreement. I don't know that it really requires delineating, from my perspective, a lot more because there's reporting mechanisms in there about number of volunteers, volunteer hours, production hours, and things like that. And I mean, I think that whoever reviews that, whether that's city manager's office or if it's us, we can definitely see, you know, what trends are doing. So, just speaking for myself, I'm fine going ahead and, you know, doing this, you know, signing this agreement, you know, with the understanding that it is gonna be reviewed in, in June. And I think that'll be a good time to, to take stock and see what measures we've been able to hit and what we've still got to hit. That's, that's me.
Yeah, my concern is we're so far into the year to, to look at somebody else. And I think, I do agree, I think maybe with Commissioner Hodges and the fact that we, we are agreeing to a one-year, you know, contract that I think I can probably live with at this time. One of the things that I, I think that was said earlier about, you know, individuals bringing programs to you and if the quality's not good, and I watched one the other day and I can't remember what it was, I think a bad program does more for you than not having a program at all. Because you're speaking to Salina Media Connection, what they have. And the audio was bad and I can't remember exactly what show that was, but I thought to myself, that's not the, the quality you want on there. So, I think it's kinda reminds me of back when ATMs first came about, you were better off not to have one, to have one that was down every time somebody wanted to get money. And I kinda relate that to a program that's on. And if, if it's, it's not a good quality, you know, don't put it on. You know, I, I think you want to put out a good product. So, at this point, I think I'm, I'm willing to, to go ahead and, and give the group a year. And next June, we've got some things in, in place that we want to see some improvements. Now, we don't expect you to be perfect by next June, but if we can see improvement and we seem to be moving in the right direction, I think that's, that's important. And I think the fact that you've, you know, hopefully you're, you're getting some board members, you get some staff on board that is, has a passion for it, because it's, you know, it is, hopefully you could get some students involved because there, you know, this is, can become a career for somebody as far as getting into the media area. So, I would, I would look to the high schools and colleges for, for individuals that have a desire to put something like this on their resume, so.
Well, we have wonderful opinions, but we need a motion.
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve resolution number nineteen dash seven seven four eight, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Community Access Television of Salina Incorporated, doing business as Salina Media Connection for public educational and governmental television programming services through a public access channel and a governmental educational access channel.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution nineteen dash seven seven four eight. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to one. And to the commissioners and our staff, thank you, board members, for coming in. Mr. Stevens, appreciate that. Is the last issue one that we would likely finish before? We'll need a break up here or ask for the commissioner's pleasure?
The pressure's on Mr. Andrew. Whatever you think.
Well, well, well stated. Mr. Andrew, do you think this is shorter than fifteen or longer?
I think shorter than that.
Thank you. Come on up.
Item eight point one, consider request to change the official street name of Coach Light Lane, which is located on the south side of Interstate seventy west of North Ninth Street, Tabakta Court. Eight point one A's first reading ordinance number one nine dash one one zero one seven.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think you're familiar with the property that's located between the interstate and west of Ninth Street and, and south of Coach Light Lane, which is the site of a recently-completed Comfort Inn and Suites. And when we were doing research on this property and looking at the development proposal of Mr. Raja Bakht, at the end of the street, we were looking at addressing and we determined that the only reason that the property on Coach Light Lane had a Ninth Street address was because when those hotels were built in the nineteen seventies, Coach Light Lane was not a named street. It was just a KDOT frontage road and, and driveway. So, city staff contacted Mr. Hasu Bakht about changing the address of the hotel there to a Coach Light Lane address in lieu of a Ninth Street address. And he responded back that he was open to the address change, but wanted to explore the possibility of changing the name of Coach Light Lane. So, staff explained the application process, provided an application. He solicited Mr. Roger Bakht as a co-applicant who was supportive of the name change. And they submitted an application to change the name of Coach Light Lane to Bakhtah Court. There are three property owners on the south side of Coach Light Lane, Mr. Roger Bakht, Mr. Hasu Bakht, and then there's a property right at this location here that's owned by Mr. Amru Patel. Coach Light Lane's a little bit unusual as that the usual way that streets are created in Salina is the developer does a subdivision plat. He puts the names of the streets on the plat. The streets are built and at the time that they are built and accepted by the city, we go out and put up street signs identifying those streets. And those streets are used for building permits, water service, gas, electric service, emergency service response, and mail delivery. In this particular case, this was a KDOT frontage road. Coach Light Lane was, became a named street in nineteen eighty-two after some improvements were made to the property. And it was named Coach Light Lane because there was a Coach Light Inn and Restaurant on the street. There's no statutory process set out in state law for changing the street name. We have a local process and application that involves sending notice to all property owners who have frontage on the named street. We review by city departments and get input. And then there's a public hearing held by the planning commission. That public hearing is an opportunity for potentially affected property owners to be heard. And then the final action is made by the city commission. And either a resolution ordinance is recorded in the register of deeds office and the official street map for the city is changed. Then the final step is changing out street signs. You may recall the most recent street name change, we had Scanlon Avenue and Bailey Road that intersected with Centennial Road. Salina Airport Authority requested that that be renamed to Arnold Avenue continuously in a loop. And we went through this same process. And today, Bailey Road, leading from Centennial Road, is now Arnold Avenue instead. And so, this process has been used a number of times. In the River Trail addition, every time the developer's family had a child born, we changed the street name. So, there is a process for doing that. This has been Coach Light Lane since nineteen eighty-two. It's a short frontage road type street. And we notified the three potentially affected owners. And Mr. Hasu Bakht and Mr. Roger Bakht are in favor of the change. We did not receive any response from Mr. Amru Patel. But Mr. Patel would not really be affected because this property right here is addressed off Ninth Street. It still has frontage on Ninth Street. The nineteen forty-five address is probably not gonna change. So, the only impacted parties would be the Bakhtas. There's no requirement that there be unanimous consent. We just have not heard anything back from Mr. Patel. So, we've laid out some options for you. I would note that the planning commission held a public hearing on this. There were no objections made at the public hearing and the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend that the street name change occur from Coach Light Lane to Bakhtah Court. So, you could approve the attached ordinance, changing the name of Coach Light Lane to Bakhtah Court. If that request is approved, the attached ordinance would be recorded in the deeds office and a new street sign would be installed at the intersection. You could approve this ordinance, subject to any condition that you think appropriate. And one possible condition would be a condition that the petitioners pay for the production and installation of the new street sign. You could postpone action on this request if you feel you need additional information or you could decline to approve the attached ordinance, in which case the street name would remain in place as Coach Light Lane. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have. I think Mr. Roger Bakht is here and you can address any questions that you have to him as well. But this is a public street. It has a intersection street sign that says Coach Light Lane and North Ninth Street. And if you approve this action, that sign will need to be changed out.
Questions or concerns?
No, sir.
I'll just give my opinion on paying for the street sign. I think if we can give seventy-five thousand for a roof, we can pay for a street sign. But that's just a personal opinion, if it's approved, right?
Should we know how much the street signs have to cost now? You've got me worried.
It's less than seventy-five thousand. Any questions, concerns, comments from the public?
The one thing I learned in the last street change is that formerly, our street department fabricated those in-house, but they are now contracting out to have those made. So, there's a little bit of a lag in doing that. And staff would have to coordinate once you give direction on the change to make sure that we get that sign up.
Okay, thank you. Any action to be taken?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city commission approve ordinance number one nine one one oh one seven, changing the name of Coach Light Lane to Bakhtah Court and repealing ordinance number eight two eight nine three nine.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to improve, to approve on first reading ordinance nineteen dash one one zero one seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This passes four zero in first reading. This will be brought back next...
This will be brought back for second reading at your next meeting.
All right. Is there any other business?
I have one item that's very, very short that I emailed about you, or emailed to you about earlier this week. First of all, I wanted to thank staff for giving us an update on our legal expenses. And I was wondering, I think that this would merit either a discussion item during a city commission meeting or possibly a portion of a study session to go over this. I know that Ms. Pack had prepared a PowerPoint, kind of as a tutorial about what all legal services encompasses. And I thought it was very helpful and educational. And it also did raise some more questions for me. And rather than, you know, piecemeal it back and forth, my questions to Mr. Schrag or, you know, putting it under other business, I was hoping that there might be some consensus on the governing body that we could at least entertain this as a discussion item or possibly a study session item for the future.
Certainly fine with either. Were there specific, or did you anticipate action? I mean, just discussion?
Yeah, just discussion. I mean, I'm just looking at, you know, since we, since we have spent about three million, almost three million dollars in... almost $3 million in the last five years on, on legal, I'm just, I mean, I was trying to look for an equivalent program or contract that we as a governing body wouldn't at least, you know, cast an eye on to make sure that we knew what was going on. So, I mean, that just-
I guess, and I'm a guess from the staff's perspective, the staff would need general questions you want answered or some information to, just some guidance.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Absolutely.
I'm learning.
Yeah, and if you want me, I mean, I'll, I'll be more than happy to shoot you an email. I've just got, yeah, a few questions that I had about the information that was presented just because like some, the expenses for Stinson Leonard Street had the notation shilling remediation, so I didn't know if that included the Cora work that they did for us. And then I didn't see any reference to Oregon, Erskine, or however you say that, for our land annexation eminent domain thing with the wastewater plant listed on those. And that was, that was just a couple, those were just a couple of questions I had when I just cast a quick glance at it, but I would appreciate the opportunity to just take a look at that and get up to speed about what all we've got going on with these expenses.
Do we have a study session availability in the next, I guess, two, three weeks to get that information together?
I'm having technical problems. I don't have connectivity to look at our study session schedule at the moment. I know we've got dates out in the future, I just don't know a date.
We probably would not need an entire-
I think what might be helpful is to share your questions with me and the commission and then we can talk about, I mean, I don't know, from staff's perspective, we have a presentation to make and I doubt we're going to be able to answer the questions on the fly, so anything you can share in advance would be helpful.
Absolutely, I'd be, I'll be happy to share those with you, but yeah, Ms. Pack put together a nice legal services overview that-
Yeah, we actually presented that in a study session.
Right, but then having the, having the figures to go along with it, I think, kind of makes it into a somewhat of a different discussion, so.
Or if there's a study session coming up that would be relatively short, we could maybe combine two-
Right, I mean, I'm thinking that we probably need 15 or 20 minutes. So if there's a study session that we, that's going to be short, or we could come in 15 minutes early, like at 2:15 or 2:00?
Yeah, I'm sure we can find that slot on the study session. I'm just trying to anticipate what's expected of staff.
Well, I think that, I mean, and, and this is good and, and I appreciate it because what I, I told you that I had wanted was basically just a list of, you know, what we'd paid out over the last several years and, I mean, I think to a large extent that it's here, but, you know, like I said, my concern with the Stinson Leonard Street number, it has shilling remediation attached to it. Well, is that just because the bulk of that information, or bulk of that funding is associated with shilling remediation or is there some that's referring to the memo that Anna Kristuluk worked on about the Cora issues? I mean, my, my question is if you're going to call it out specifically as being linked to the shilling remediation, is there an additional bill to Stinson Leonard for other issues or did that include that? The other thing is, and like I said, I didn't see anything, I think, was the guy's name Tim Orick that did the work for us on the eminent domain? I recall that being something in like the $30,000 range or something like that, and I didn't know if maybe that didn't get swept up with a, into the legal, maybe it got assigned to, you know, utilities or something like that. But, yeah, I mean, those are, those are two questions that I have off the top of my head. And I really, what I don't like to do is to discuss some of these things under other business. I mean, I think if we're going to, you know, ask questions or whatever, or take a look at, you know, how we stack up compared to our peer communities, I think that that's something that, that needs to be discussed as an agenda item. Because the research that I did and, you know, granted, this is all from material that I could access online. I don't know if I brought it with me, but it showed that the average per capita legal expense of like the seven, of, or the six, what I called peer cities, turned out to be about $5 per capita and we're spending about $13 per capita. So I think it at least begs the question of why are we two or three times, why are we investing two or three times more than our peer cities are? And is, in light of the budget crunch that we find ourselves in, is this a way that we could see if there's another approach, if there's something we could be doing to get those expenses down? Because, you know, $3 million in whatever this was for, four or five years, it's a, it's a big investment and it's, I understand that it's an important investment to make, but, you know, I think we, we need to maybe ask ourselves, do we want to be driving the Corvette? Of course we do, but maybe we, maybe it's time for us to look at a, a nice used Camry or something or, or see, you know, what we can do to meet, meet our needs at a lower price.
And Mike, I guess I'd ask, I don't know how staff has everything set up on a ledger, but I know we've had a lot that's gone on over the last five years when we start looking at star bonds and, and I don't, and I don't know what part Clark Mize played in that versus outside counsel. Same thing with the remediation. I think about the, the coma Cora, the ethics violation that was addressed. Is there a way that we can get some numbers there that maybe would help us to know that we've had some extraordinary expenses over the last, you know, three to four years and break the, break that down? I don't want to say per event, but you know what I'm talking about. I think would help us because some of that we need to pull out. I mean, she was talking, Commissioner Hodges talked about $13 per person versus five. Well, we may have six of that because we've done this, this, and thi, I mean, I'm guessing there's not many other communities have dealt with the remediation issues we have with spatial council.
Or the star bonds.
Star bonds. So I think if we can get some better numbers there, that's going to help us to filter down to where we really are as far as our, our day-to-day expenses.
And that's where I approached it from too, Commissioner, I did, because, I mean, who else has an Air Force base that needs remediation? Nobody. But, you know, when I look at, you know, the Wichita, the Topecas, I mean, the Hutchensons, I mean, everybody's got their, their challenges and stuff, so I think that would be really helpful to see, you know, how much our challenges are costing us.
And I'm just trying to get a good understanding of-
Does that make, does that help a little bit? I think that helps.
If there's an expectation we're going to prepare and, and present, I guess that's helpful. I understand your questions, but we, I doubt we'd be able to answer many if any of them off the top of our head in that study session. If there's something you want us to do in advance to prepare, anything you can do to share with us would be helpful.
You know what Jim Coatch did at the very beginning of our sanitation, and I shouldn't link this to like, you know, sanitation or something, but you did a really big spreadsheet, I think it was on an 11 by 17, that had like all of our, kind of what our peer communities are, what they did, what their approaches were, you know, how they did that, what that cost. And I think that that's something I tried to do in a very crude and rudimentary fashion just from, you know, information that I could glean online, but I think that that would be something that's helpful because maybe the information that I'm getting online doesn't paint the entire picture. But I think that if we can get a sense of, you know, does it, does it work best for us to have a contract with an outside counsel firm to represent us on a day-to-day basis or is it something where we need to look at? The other communities that I, I was looking at actually had an attorney or more just on staff and it, this is nothing, is in no way any comment on the fine work that Clark Mize Linville does, but at the same time, I think that, you know, when we're talking about a lot of, you know, continuous process improvements and ways that we can tighten our belt, I think this is just one more that, that needs to take, that at least bears some scrutiny.
I'm assuming that without doing an exhaustive day-by-day invoice of hours that were billed, there's no easy way to break out what each dollar was, I mean, topic, excuse me, topic-wise.
Well, if it's helpful, Mayor and Commissioners, I think the conversation that I understand that Commissioner Hodges is speaking of is a healthy conversation.
Yeah.
And in many respects, it's, well, it's just something that everybody should feel totally comfortable talking about is, we spoke of in the, in the study session, what you've just described is the threshold question. I will go to Kansas City on Friday for a continuing education program put on by the City Attorneys Association. There will be a mix of in-house staff counsel and there will be a mix of private practitioners. The, you know, I, our firm has had the privilege of being in this role now for, well, since 1986. That's a long time and it's been a privilege. But we fully understand that as staff manages to the question and as you all fulfill your role in relation to the question, it's, it's a topic I just hope everyone feels comfortable with and conceptually. Now, the, the accounting is different as, as I'm sure you all know, it's, there's a function of cost accounting in terms of the model, in terms of what is, you know, if you're dealing with outside counsel, you're paying a certain sum and everything is then the responsibility of outside counsel in terms of the costs associated with that, that program. My participation in that program will be paid for by Clark Mize in Linville as compared to those who are on staff and obviously they are paid while they're there. I assure you, I'm not, and there's no charge to the city for that time that I'll be in Kansas City on Friday. Not, not, one's not wrong, one's not right, they're just a little different. So I think as long as there is a level of, of discussion that, I don't know, it may take a conversation for staff to know what the governing body wishes to look at in terms of the model. And there has been a lot going on, but that can be addressed in a number of ways. So I hope everybody's just comfortable just talking about it and figuring it out.
Right, we'll ask you to find us some space on the, on the study session schedule.
Look for black time and we'll take a little bit of preparation in answering your question. There is quite a bit of detail in the billing, so we'll take a look at, you know, to what extent that, how easy that task is to kind of assign to different projects and sort that out.
Commissioner Hopkin and I may have the same question.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Are there more than two of us likely to show up tomorrow evening at Calvary Apostolic Church for the Centennial Park discussion?
I will not be there.
I will not be attending.
I will do my best to be there, so I'll probably be there.
And I'm, I'm going to try to get there and-
Do you want to address it?
I'll, I'll, I looked to Lauren on this. I know we had talked about having a meeting with the neighbors at some point, this seems to be precluding us, but I, I'm not comfortable being there on behalf of the commission and being asked questions that aren't in front of, you know.
And my role is going to be more to listen.
Yeah, I don't think I can answer anything.
I think it would be good for Greg to talk to you a little bit about how that works in terms of an open meeting.
Yeah, I think it's a situation, it's the non-city meeting, if you will, where if, well, ideally even if two of you are there, but more so if three, as you know, two of you can have an interactive communication on city business. As soon as we, as soon as you look around and there are three of you total, including yourself, I think that's when you just, the safest approach is just not to engage in either private interaction or certainly not speak in the meeting so as to be heard by your colleagues on the commission. That, even just the exchange, the interactive exchange that could occur by virtue of more than one of you speaking can get us into an interactive communication. So the easy answer is if you look around and see more than two, I would just avoid any interactive communication, whether privately or by addressing the group.
Right.
And that's based on conversation with the Attorney General. There was a point in time at which, you know, one question as well, is it just a matter of kind of trying to make that your meeting? If, if we know maybe a majority might be there, is there a way to notice that up in a way that enables you to participate? But the recommendation of the Attorney General's office, to the extent they can comment on that sort of thing, was no, that that is really not a cure. If you're not in your meeting, your duly called, noticed meeting, then best not to engage in what would be interactive communication.
We will sit as far apart from each other as we can.
No eye contact.
Right.
Speaking in meetings, I did want to remind you of the special meeting tomorrow at 1:30 at Tony's Pizza Event Center.
That's T-Pac.
On the joint meeting of the Salina Public Entertains-
Yeah, nothing more embarrassing than leaving and going to the wrong place.
Steve Benner.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Sounds unanimous?
Yes.
We will meet Thursday then.
Although I did walk by Mettler School today and they had no School Today sign out there, so some people must forget where their meetings are.